The time is six oh three. I'd like to call the Special Board of Education meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Nelson.
Here.
Lanier.
Shogars.
Here.
Amara.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Here, and a quorum is present. The first item on the agenda are audience comments, and the first person for audience comments is Ashley Giddens.
Good evening. I'm speaking as a concerned parent who is confused about how we ended up in this situation. Before June twenty twenty four, Heather Hill Elementary School already faced safety issues, such as a lack of crossing guards, streets that are not designated as one-way during pickup and drop-off, and reports of parents speeding down the street trying to get their children to school on time to avoid tardy marks. However, instead of addressing these existing safety concerns, the Heather Hill Detention Basin Project began in June of twenty twenty four, a project that this board approved. It seems that ensuring the safety of the children at Heather Hill Elementary School is not being prioritized. I am confused as to how the only green space at Heather Hill Elementary School has been repurposed for stormwater management, especially when there were alternative options for the project. It's my understanding that the mayor's husband, who was a vice president of the school board, cast a deciding vote resulting in a forty-three decision to approve the project. Given this conflict of interest, he should have been required to recuse himself. As of today, Heather Hill Elementary is the only school in school District one sixty-one that does not have designated one-way streets during pickup and drop-off, and now lacks green space. Also, I want to mention the psychological effects this project will have on the children. Without green space to run and play, they will likely experience lower test scores, a current issue at Heather Hill, increased rates of obesity, and potentially contribute to a school-to-prison pipeline. This is especially concerning in a school with predominantly black and brown children who would now be attending school next to six-foot bars. Additionally, a safety plan has not been provided, and it appears that both the village and the school district are improvising as they go along. More recently, the village claimed they would send employees to monitor the kids during recess, yet no further details have been provided. I wonder, how many employees are specifically assigned to monitor children during recess? What is the ratio of supervisors to students during recess? What specific training do these employees receive to ensure the safety of children during recess? How often is this supervision evaluated, and where criteria are used to assess its effectiveness? Are there any recent incidents or reports of safety concerns during recess, and how were they addressed? What communication mechanisms are in place for reporting and addressing safety concerns during recess? And how is the safety informed about these safety measures? And what opportunities exist for community input or feedback? Where protocols are in place if a child is found in the dangerous restricted area during recess? Are there any planned improvements or adjustments to the current recess supervision practices based on community feedback or observed safety concerns? I ask this board to provide the children at Heather Hill Elementary School with the same resources as the other children in the school district, which consists of providing them with green space by filling the hole. The village can revisit the discussion on underground project alternatives. A few weeks ago, a child was discovered behind the fence in the construction site. There is now evidence that children are likely to access the detention basin, posing significant safety risks. There may be other children who access the site. As such, the community is requesting the school board and village of Flossmore to reconsider completing the project underground and filling the hole. The safety of the children is a priority, and this option should be reevaluated with the new evidence in mind. Next, implement a one-way street during drop-off and pickup. Thirdly, install surveillance and monitoring systems. There is a need for increased surveillance around the detention basin due to the potential for children to access the area. I recommend installing ring cameras around the basin and employing dedicated personnel to actively monitor the footage. And lastly, increase supervision. There is currently insufficient supervision to prevent children from entering the basin area before school, during recess, and after school. Additional staff members should be hired and dedicated to monitoring children during these critical times. Increasing supervision will help prevent accidents and ensure children's safety. Raise your hand if you heard about the incident that occurred today at the basin. Exactly. Raise your hand if you voted yes for this project, and you have since rode by to see Heather Hill Elementary School and see how this looks. If you have, I will understand why you would think that this project needs to be readjusted and how maybe the board got it wrong, and that's okay. But the hole should be filled. Thank you.
Thank you. Anisa Sargent.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anisa Sargent. I'm here with my husband, Charles Sargent. Our son is a second grader at Heather Hill Elementary School, and he's been there since kindergarten. Professionally, I understand data, strategic planning, implementation, progress monitoring, course correcting to move student achievement forward. But as a parent, I haven't been overly worried about these things because I know that overall, we are in a great school district with rock star teachers and staff, and I also know what it could be, as most of my work has been in underserved communities. What actually impressed me the most about Heather Hill was going to one of the curriculum nights when my son was in kindergarten, so a brand-new student to the school, and I noticed that every single teacher and staff member, including the principal at the time, said hi to him and me and knew him by name. First, I wasn't sure if that was a good thing, but it turned out to be. It showed me that he was more than an NWEA score or a future IAR score. He was seen, and he was cared for. I've had a similar experience each year that my son has been at Heather Hill. In fact, our presence here this evening shows that we all care about our students. We care about our schools, and we care about our leaders, teachers, and staff that we entrust them with every single day. What my husband and I and other individuals you have heard from or will hear from don't care for is the water detention project. Experienced district, school, and community leaders understand that at the core of moving student achievement forward is safety, security, culture, climate, and morale between all stakeholders, including families and community members. If you can't get that right, you cannot, and you will not go very far with instruction. When safety, security, culture, climate, and morale go down, the result is families moving away, lower enrollment, decreased attendance, a decline in student achievement, and a high staff turnover. We are here today because we feel that the core of what makes us great has been jeopardized with how this project has been handled, and quite frankly, raises concerns for the trajectory of Heather Hill. We want you to take action with what we're requesting, and you've heard several ask-fours. I just have two more questions and a comment. If one hundred percent of the ask-fours can be done, will you do them, and when? My second question and comment is to bring a little bit more perspective to the situation. If one hundred percent of the ask-fours cannot be done, can ninety percent, eighty percent, even seventy percent be done, and when? Negotiation and compromise on either side of this situation is not a sign of weakness. It is actually a sign of concern, consideration, collaboration, and care. It communicates that we are not enemies, but we are all on the same page with the same objective, which is to keep our kids safe and to win at preparing them for the future ahead of them. Respectfully, we are simply asking that you see us, hear us, and put observable, measurable solutions in motion regarding this water detention basin that keeps kids at the center of all of your decisions. Thank you.
Belji Faulkner. Did I pronounce that right?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Thank you so much. I speak on behalf of the concerned residents of Flossmore and Heather Hill. I have here a list of community asks from the district. Again, we ask that you revisit the discussion on the underground project alternatives. It is crucial to reconsider the options of completing the project underground and filling the hole. We now have evidence that children will likely access the detention basin, which poses significant safety risk. Again, implement a one-way street, drop-off, and pickup. To enhance safety and manage traffic flow better, consider making the street one-way during school, drop-off, and pickup times. Install surveillance and monitoring systems. Install ring cameras around the detention basin and hire dedicated personnel to actively monitor the footage. The cameras should be motion-activated. That would be more effective as it would be sent. It would send an alert to whomever is monitoring the feeds. Increase supervision. Hire ten additional staff members to monitor children before school, during recess, and after school to ensure they do not enter the basin. These are our asks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Deb Span. Okay, we'll come back to, oh.
I think she's here now.
Are you Deb?
Oh, yes.
Perfect timing. Welcome.
Will I go up to the mic?
Yep. Or if you need a minute, we can go and come back to you. It's up to you.
Well, I just want to say that I am Deb Spain, a longtime resident of Heather Hill. I feel that the school, Heather Hill School, is an injustice to the children that attend there because that is not a safe passage where the children should feel safe in attending school. The environment itself is a hazard. I feel that it's not equitable compared to other schools. I think that the decision-makers did a disservice to the students as well as the community. I don't think you would have thought to do that over the viaduct, under the viaduct, where Western Avenue is. These children should have an equitable environment to learn, and you didn't think about them. And you sit here on the school board making decisions with our tax dollars, and you just didn't consider us as a community. Thank you.
No, I'm just, I'm jotting down. Yeah, okay. The next person is Crystal Cleggitt.
Good evening. I'm not sure if you all are aware, but recent Flossmore news for fall of twenty twenty four has the viaduct project phase two near completion. Not sure if any of you have drove past there, but near completion, to my understanding. I don't know why this should even be in the Flossmore news because what it says is much progress has been made on the second phase of the Village Flossmore Road Viaduct Drainage Improvement Project, which includes the construction of an onsite stormwater sewer, a naturalized detention basin located near Heather Hill. The phase began in June with the removal of existing tennis courts, then the removal and stockpiling of topsoil, which will be used during restoration. Several weeks were spent on excavation of the basin. In August, the permanent safety fence was installed, was installed, meaning already done, which has not been the case considering children have been over the fence, under the fence, around the fence. The deer were under the fence. They're just about as confused as I am today now. Final restoration, the installation of native and turf seeding and erosion control blanket and project completion. My point in making this statement is the fact that this deters people from finding out who Flossmore really is. Yes, Flossmore is great, but this is false information, and I don't think we should be putting out things that aren't current, especially considering that the permanent fence is not there correct yet at all whatsoever. But if I'm a newcomer to the community, I'm going to probably dispel some of maybe the rumors that I'm hearing, or I'm going to be like a parent who say, "Why should I say anything when I just moved here a few months ago, and I see that people were talking about it?" And in all honesty, I have no clue as to why someone would put something this size around a school. And I said, "I agree," and they said, "Well, what can I do now?" And I said, "Well, you can come to the board meeting." Well, is it going to do anything? Because I saw where the board approved this to happen. So do they listen to us? And I said, "Well, all you can do is speak up for you and yours, and I would not discourage you to do that." Instead, I would ask that as you continue to see elections coming in twenty twenty-five, that you advocate, that you vote, that you teach your children how to do those things because terms are short-term, four years, eight years, things like that, and we can make those changes. But right now, there's still a change that can be made where we really can ask the village whether they say no. I wish they would say yes, that they would really reconsider the underground option. When I ask kids, "Why are you so close? Why are you behind the fence?" They're used to playing on Heather Hill ground. This is their play space. This is not where they're thinking that, oh, about floodwater, and here's my fear. There was an eight-year-old boy in Texas recently that's in the news who unfortunately drowned, has autism. But the thing about that little boy was, it was at four fifty-six in the morning that he left. So it wasn't the lights were on, there was no supervision, he was sleeping, and so were the parents. And all I can think of is, even if there is this permanent fence, we have nine hours of draining time, depending upon how much rain we get, nine hours. And what if our children are one of those little people at four fifty-six in the morning? What are we going to do then? The fact that kids are inquisitive, they're curious, they're being kids. I'm asking for our adults to start being adults, and at the same time, also think like a child and think, "What about this? Would make me interested in it?" So that way, we can protect them and keep them safe. Is it great that the village have people come out and at recess? Of course, it's great. That's not what I'm expecting of them to do. I'm expecting for them to be doing other things. This should not have to be all duties as assigned in the job description when their other job description listed other things for them to be able to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Housley.
My name is Kevin. I'm going to try to make this as simple as I possibly can. It's like if you have a child, and the child's five years old, and you filled the tub up halfway. Would you leave the child unattended? No, none of you would. So why would you put a big, large pool the size of a football field behind the school? I went over there. The pond's from here to that desk, from the back door, the actual back door. I love educated people, but I love common sense people more. Because education is not a level of superiority. It's a personal achievement. You've got to have common sense on this. That's all I got to say.
Pam Jackson. Okay, thank you. Nefetiria Coleman.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nefetiria Coleman, and I'm a new parent of the district. And I feel kind of bad because my issue is way smaller than what is going on, and I would have never known what was going on at Heather Hill if I had not come. So I'm glad I did decide to come today to voice my opinion about what I have going on. But I do hope that you all figure that out. That sounds really bad. I have not been over there, but that sounds like a bad choice from inception until now. But I was coming here to simply talk to you all about the pre-K here in our district. I did email you, Mr. Dana, and I have talked to, I think it was Chrissy, Christina. I've talked to her too, but I was just trying to figure out why we don't have a full-day pre-K. I drive every day to Chicago Ridge to take, well, I used to take both of them, but now my oldest is in kindergarten now. But I drive there because I literally hate the daycares in the area. I tried one, and it was an awful experience. And my children were only there long enough for a spot to open back up at the old daycare. And I was just trying to figure out, you know, the school district is great educationally from the last time I looked, and I try to check periodically, and I'm just trying to figure out why we don't have a full-day program. Because even working from home, the hours of the pre-K just aren't, can't do anything. It seems like a grocery store run, and then you're back to pick up your kids. So not saying we should get rid of the kids, but at the same time, it's just such a short time, especially with people working full-time jobs. And again, I don't feel that the daycares around are adequate, but that's just my personal opinion. I don't know if anybody else has experienced it, and so that was my concern and my reason for being here today to voice that. I hope that we can figure out this water thing because that sounds very scary, and also figure out a full-day pre-K program. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I think that's the last, yeah, that's the last one. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We certainly appreciate it. We value feedback from the community. Part of your report, right, Dr. Michael Mullin, include an update on the basin, and it's also an agenda item, so. Okay, we're ready for your report.
Well, good evening, Board of Education and audience members, not only ones who are in person, but those who are joining us online at home as well. Welcome to our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. Before I do get into our typical updates, I did hear a couple of questions about why the Special Board of Education meeting from last Thursday was canceled. I wanted to clarify for the community. After hearing a few questions from some of the people in this room tonight, I wanted to clarify that in order to hold a board meeting, you have to have four board members in person. Otherwise, it's an Open Meetings Act violation. So if you do not have the four in person, you can't hold the meeting. So that's what happened last week. So when we knew that we could not hold it, we wanted to make sure that we communicated right away. We also carried forward all of those agenda items to this meeting tonight, verbatim. So those are on, actually, right at the top of our discussion items, and two more after me. So I'll keep my comments brief. But moving back to this meeting and our weekly updates, a lot has happened since we were together on August twelfth. Just a few of the highlights. We finished our remaining two institute days. We had our meeting on the twelfth. We had just finished our first one. We finished the last two on standards-based grading, inclusive practices, curriculum work throughout the day, and we welcomed students that Thursday. But before that, another awesome chalk-the-walk. Thanks to all the parents, siblings, staff members, you name it, community members who came out, drew messages on the sidewalk, on the buildings, just in time for it to rain on Thursday morning. Unfortunately, washed a number of those pieces off. Thankfully, there are a lot of great photos of the messages. I know that the students that were able to see them certainly appreciated it. But two years in a row, we've had rain, so at least next year, we're hoping it'll be okay. But despite the rain, I really want to give kudos to our Transportation Department, Ms. Alexander, Ms. Labella, for really kind of working through those bus routes. It is no small feat as everyone is registering and we're checking residency information, and we're working with the bus company to factor all of those pieces in. And then, I know the level of accuracy that Fran demands and Ms. Alexander as well. So to deliver smooth-running buses on the first day of school is nothing short of amazing. So I do want to credit both of them for their hard work. The reimagined back-to-school event at Flossmore Park last week was a hit. I don't know. I'm not sure if it was smaller, maybe marginally. I know personally, we handed out five hundred Italian ices from Zarlingos. I think we ran out about five thirty. Started at four o'clock, so I think we'll try adding another hundred next year. We'll go to six hundred. But I do want to thank Stephanie Wright and Jamie Paesley from the Flossmore Library for doing the heavy lifting on the event. Really smiles, people connecting. We had a lot of community resources available for people to connect with. I saw people who I haven't run into in fifteen or twenty years who live in the community. So it was just a really, really good, positive event. We look forward to doing it again next year. We'll try to expand in ways that make sense. But I think the four-to-six reimagined back-to-school event was a huge success, and we'll continue that for next year. This week, we're preparing for our This week, we're preparing for our elementary school open houses tomorrow from 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Then the Parker Junior High open house is on Wednesday, August 28th, from 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Parents, I really encourage you to join us at the open houses. It's an opportunity to connect with your children's teachers, building administrators, other staff members in the buildings. It's the best opportunity for you to ask direct questions about what's happening with your family support that you may need, and we can help you with all of those pieces. Again, as we approach, really, we're a couple of weeks away from the midway point of the first quarter. So once we get there, we know that report cards are right around the corner. The change to standards-based grading is impactful. So I want you to make sure that you have all of your questions answered, you have all the information that you need to support your children. And then finally, the fall NWA map window is open. We're now assessing students. That data will be used to plan instructional activities, groups, enrichment, resources, intervention, everything that we can do with it, so that we make meaningful use of that data that we're collecting. Once we finish the map window and the Ames Web Assessment Window, we'll bring that information to the board just as part of our monitoring process, as we're looking at data points, school improvement plans, department plans, on a consistent basis. There's a ton happening in our school community right now. I will say we're off to one of the best starts that we've had in years. From a staffing perspective, we have great teachers in place. I'm really impressed with the people that we've brought in this year, whether they're experienced or they're just out of college, and we only have a few of those. I'm really thankful for the hard work of our building and district staff members to get us to this point, and I'm looking forward to another successful school year. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Any questions? I just have one about standards-based grading. I know a parent talked a little bit about concern about making sure that we, you know, had our information up to date and that parents have access. Have you found that there, has there been like an increase of, you know, parents reaching out? Like, are parents realizing where they can connect to if they have questions? Because open houses is upon us, but just how's that been going?
Can I throw to Amabel one? Because I feel like if I get the parent concern, it's usually a little bit larger.
Okay, all right, yeah, just in general, if you could just tell us how, yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, just to point out, we haven't received any additional questions on our QR code, but we will keep moving that QR code up so it stays visible on our website. We're constantly updating information on our website. Also, our schools, our building will be sharing information during open house. Also, just open, there's this grading tables, there's a presentation added to the admin presentation, as well as teachers having that information to share also. So we're just trying to continue pushing information out. We have more information coming out around September 23rd on the actual report card, as Dr. Smith mentioned, in preparation for parents receiving the actual report card. Now, what does it look like? What are the different pieces? Because it does look different than previous report cards. So we'll just keep adding communication and answering questions as they come.
And for parents, let's just say that can't make, that for whatever reason, maybe they can't make it to a parent-teacher conference, will information go home with the new report card, that either, like either the QR code or a brief explanation, so that it doesn't take someone by surprise?
So our typical letter that we send out with the report card, we're going to play to send that a little bit early. So there's information that lets you know it's coming, that walks parents through sort of a graphic of how to understand the new report card, as well as the invitation to attend the upcoming meetings and view the webinars also. If parents get a hint of open house, they will receive all of that information on our website. So we're just continuing to post everything and make it available if you're not able to make it out.
My last question on this would be then for eighth-grade parents, because they will soon be thinking about high school. And they might have used, you know, the traditional report card as a gauge for how to think about, you know, pushing, you know, what kind of classes that their student should take. Is there anything that we, maybe this is something for you to think about. Is there anything that we need to do in addition for our eighth-grade parents, just to make sure they feel confident about their child's placement in high school?
Absolutely, yes. That's a really good point. We will definitely explore that with the high school. Right now, the information that we have from the high school recently received what data points the high school will collect from us. So they are, HAP, what I say they.
Okay.
HAP and Bloom are also aware that we make this transition to our grading system. So they know that the, instead of receiving the traditional grade data, they will receive the scale scores, as well as the NWA math assessment data, the A to attendance data that they're used to receiving. So we can actually explore that as the high school gives us more information on their paperwork processes for next year.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, thank you, Dana. Okay, the next item on the agenda are the action items, and we just have one. May I have a motion to approve personnel report 25-005?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Rouse?
Yes.
Childress?
Yes.
And Barbara?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Lee Strong?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. Okay, the next set of items are the discussion items, and the first item is the School Board Mission and Vision Statement. This was one of the agenda items requested by a school board member for the special meeting. Just the one thing that I can say is that the school board itself does not have its own mission and vision, because we embody the mission and vision of the district. I think it's something, though, that we can certainly talk about during our goal-setting time with the representative from ISBE. But what is included in the public documents is the SD161 strategic plan. So I don't, oh, thank you, Courtney. So if we're thinking about how we're going to incorporate this into our goals conversation, that's good too. But happy to hear anybody's thoughts on this.
I would definitely think we would use it as a guide to incorporate in our discussion regarding board-specific goals during our work with ISBE. There's certainly some things in here that would be better stated from a board perspective than from a entire stakeholder's perspective. We have a different responsibility. So certainly, that should be reflected in our goals. So yes, there are some things that I would like to see added to this, or some change.
Okay.
I concur with Michael's.
Great. Anything? Okay, good. Well, then we'll include that.
Absolutely.
Okay, the next item, discussion item, is the Heather Hill Detention Basin. And so I, Dr. Smith, you'll have a, you have an update for us, correct?
Yes, I do have an update from Bridget Wachtel, who is the village manager. Today, which I want to double-check, make sure I have all of those numbers correct. All right, so as of today, the contractor has reported there's approximately 16 loads of dirt left to either be hauled out, actually, the 16 loads left are the ones that are left to be removed. They're currently grading and shaping. Most of that dirt, I believe, is being respread, along with seeding the basin and the grounds behind the construction fence. They anticipate the concrete and curb work taking about one week to complete. They expect to begin the decorative fence compared to the chain-link fence on September 4th. Otherwise, the project is as it stands. We sent an update out last week. There is no construction, trucks in and out during arrival and dismissal. And I think a few community members mentioned the increased supervision. We have those pieces in place as well.
Oh, I don't have to ask first. Any questions, discussion from the board? I have a few questions, but.
I'll shoot.
Okay.
When are we looking at a specific date for completion at this point?
I do not have an answer from the village's perspective.
So are we projecting mid-September, before then, after then?
My understanding was that once they started working on the fence, it was about a week.
But we're at least a week and a half away from them working on the fence.
I think so.
So we're looking at approximately three weeks.
I'd say that you could safely say that, but not that it'll be done in three weeks. I think you can safely say that's the window.
That would be best-case scenario.
I think so.
And does, do you know, or does anybody know? Does anyone know if the, does the, when you talk to Bridget, is there a, like a hotline? If there are specific questions about the basin that the community can access, or is there?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
But I can, I will certainly share that.
Okay.
So to flesh out Michael's question a little bit, my understanding is there's been some weather delays, and there could be additional weather delays.
Yes.
Okay.
So they were going to work last week, last weekend, for example, rained out. So I know that there's been a few of those.
And then completion is, I guess, Michael, is completion to you when the fence is up? Or is completion when, like, all the stuff is planted? My understanding is the planting might occur later.
I would think completion is when the fence is up and whether it's during school hours or not, we don't see the big trucks rolling through the neighborhood.
Okay.
So.
I can work on that.
Yeah, I guess the concern is, as long as it's temporary fencing, what is already considered to be not the safest thing is even more unsafe. And as a community member, that's unsettling. You know, I drive by there every single day, and there's been more than one or two occasions where I saw situations that I didn't perceive were safe, from holes in the fence to significant gaps in the fence, rather on the side, under, around. So I was really hopeful that those issues would be resolved prior to the start of school. That concern escalates now that we're in the school year, regardless of whether or not we have supervision. It's still an opportunity for kids to be put in a dangerous situation.
When it comes to, when it comes to supervision during times of construction at any of our schools, what is the student, superperson, like, is that something that, now, I don't expect you to have that right now. But I'm curious, because we've had construction, or construction projects at all of our schools. So, you know, now we're faced with a construction project that's happening while school is going on. It would, it would be good for us to know as a board what the expectation is for, and especially because we have a lot of projects coming. So what do we as a board expect, can we expect in terms of the ratio of, you know, hands-on supervision?
Well, I think it's also, as you have the supervision conversation, you have to understand the context that we do not have kids on that side of the building.
Right.
During the day, we're not using that side of the building during recess. So there are no children on that side, period. So I think as we think about another impactful project, which is a conversation we're going to start about the Heather Hill office renovation, and frankly, when we start that, knowing that our construction companies have shared that that project will not start and end over the summer. So at some point, we will either have to choose to start construction on the front of the building during the school year, and they would recommend Casimir Pulaski Day, or go to the middle of October, or the start of October. And I think that's a conversation that this board is going to have to wrestle with. I think we're, October 18th, I think, is when that comes, right, Fran, ballpark? Around the middle of October, we'll be ready to start that conversation with the board, but frankly.
The session is the first meeting, and the group is the second.
Ballpark. Within six weeks here, five weeks, we will have to start talking about what that schedule looks like for next summer. I'll absolutely come right back to the Heather Hill Detention Basin supervision, but I would, it's probably cut from the same cloth, as we think about the impact, you know, the front of the building versus the back of the building. The size is different, certainly, but still an impactful piece as we're hearing feedback from the community. So I think it's something to take in account, take into account.
Dr. Smith, I think, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine. I have a bunch of questions, but go ahead.
Great. Well, I think an extension to your question, as I think I heard a number of suggestions that I think are better than where we are right now, and I would love for us to begin to, I'd love to understand with the process of adopting some of these recommendations, potentially, in the near future, being that the fact that students are in fact in school and their immediate concerns, I don't know what the response time or reaction time of us in implementing an actual plan, not just supervision, but, you know, potentially, you know, monitoring equipment, so on and so forth. Like, what is the process for us to enact some of the ideas that we have heard this evening?
Do you think we first need to know what the safety, current safety plan is before we talk about? Yeah, so maybe that's something that we need greater clarification on, what, if you had to describe what the safety plan is?
Can I chime in?
Oh, sure.
And it's more immediately. I mean, when I go by there, I see things that are safety issues right now, not something a week from now. The other morning, I drove by, it was just before seven, and the gate was open. There was a gentleman in a truck about 15 feet away from the gate. I couldn't tell if he was paying attention or asleep, but I backed up to look and see at this opening that, for me, wasn't being monitored well enough. If a kid walked up, they could have easily walked right in there, you know, so. And then this morning, when I drove by, there's a hole in the fencing, front-facing fencing, that kids can either expand or create additional access. So for me, it's like, this is a significant project that safety has to be every moment. And I'm seeing things that are concerning on a regular basis.
I would encourage you to call me, Michael. I mean, then we can respond in the moment, as opposed to.
And I guess my, my reaction is, I don't want to have to call.
Sure.
I really want those, I want that safe regardless of whether I drive by there or not.
Sure.
And that's, I mean, it's really unsettling to drive by there on a daily basis and see the things that I see that it shouldn't be dependent on me driving by. We have to embrace the responsibility, ensuring the utmost safety for that project at all times. And it shouldn't be dependent on me driving by.
I thought that they weren't supposed to be working on the site at all, but from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. So I'm troubled to hear about.
The village has changed direction.
Okay. What is it, can you give me some more detail on that?
Yes, so the village is not doing work between 8:00 and 9:00, and three, basically, 3:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon. Arrival and dismissal, no trucks in and out, no construction happening. Outside of those windows, they are working.
Okay, but you requested that the village not work during school hours?
Yes.
Okay. And they're not, they are not currently agreeing to that?
Correct. In order, in order to finish the project, they are moving forward. Now, we, you know, we stay in close contact with them. I think one of the pieces, and I'm sorry to hear Michael's had that experience, I wish you would have shared that information. It's okay.
I'm really sorry, because I really feel that when we make the commitment that we made to try to act as a good neighbor, along with that commitment comes that we must, at all times, ensure the utmost safety, and it's not happening.
Yeah. Well, I can follow up with, you know, the site engineer is supposed to walk that site multiple times per day to verify, you know, a random hole didn't appear, a middle area didn't get knocked down, that kind of stuff. So I can follow up on those pieces to make sure that the due diligence is being done. You're right, on our end, it becomes, it's supervision. It's saying what we've agreed to and doing those pieces. I think it's critically important, so.
Would it be crazy to have Scott or someone on his team walk the fence before school starts? This is, so that, so what I'm hearing from Michael, that would make two incidents where there was a hole in the fence.
Sure.
You know, if this were a project that was in the school, we would never accept that. I mean, we've done projects in the school, and I don't, Fran, probably talk about those, but we, you know, but partly because the principal's there and is going to see it and immediately say, hey, guys, this can't be that way.
Yeah.
But.
We can absolutely do that.
You know, contractors shouldn't be leaving holes in the fence, period. And I know we only have, hopefully, two weeks, and this is done, but, you know, I don't know who the right personnel is. I don't want to know that, you know, it's worth a ton of making someone get there at 6:00 a.m., but if there's a custodian on site.
Yeah, trust but verify, makes sense.
Can you go back to, you mentioned, one of the things in your conversation with Bridget was the concrete? And, I mean, because when I went by there, it looked like, well, Liz and I went by there, and there was like a gap in the, you know, the side, the, where they go, the driving, you know? So when you say one week for the concrete to be report, where is that?
My understanding, it's the curb, it's the sidewalk, and then the street would be the asphalt. So there might be some lane closures while they're doing that. I don't think they expect a full closure of the road, but during the day, some intermittent closures as. But during the day, some intermittent closures as they're laying that asphalt down.
But then, when there's lane closures, then...
It would be temporary during the day.
Okay.
Between arrival and dismissal. We've started the conversation about the one-way passage. It's just a larger conversation, it's a larger conversation.
Say, say more about that.
I think from the village's perspective, it's continuing the traffic study piece, getting through this, obviously. But then, kind of, I don't know if they need to complete another traffic study. The one that we did at Western was a little bit different, because it's an I-dot road, being that it's on, directly on Western Avenue, as opposed to Heather Hill, which is tucked in more residential. So, we may have more flexibility from the village's perspective. But I do know we've started the conversations about making that one-way, and Carol Humm, the principal there, is really a good advocate for that.
So, do, setting aside traffic studies, what is the administration's...
Oh, one-way. I mean, the problem is, you can't, if you are letting a child out, and I'm, and I'm not talking about rolling and opening the door and letting a kid jump out. If you park your car, you hop out, you run over, you're gonna let your child out so they can go to the sidewalk. You've got buses coming, what would be, south. You've got cars coming south. No one can get through. If it was all one-way, we could control bus traffic more effectively. It would be safer, because then you don't have, potentially, you know, somebody coming from, they're traveling south on Lawrence there, maybe they're not on the school side, and certain things happen. If you let a child out, that is incredibly dangerous. It's dangerous if it's one-way. But then you can see, everyone's looking in the same direction, and you can pick it up. I know, I think of Ms. Clegg and I had a conversation about that specifically. So, you know, at that point, it becomes minimizing risk, putting everyone on the same page. If we reasonably know that kids can only get out on the school side of the street, we're in a lot better place.
So, is it, so you mentioned that with Western Avenue, it was an I-dot issue. It, can, we don't have the jurisdiction to decide solely?
No, but we've, I will say that we've been having conversations about that particular project, specifically the directions of the streets, since before the most recent change at Village Hall, from a police perspective, and we, I expect to pick those up with Commissioner Estelle.
Okay. How, since on the subject of one-way streets, and I want to stay on the Heather Hill, but I have observed that the one-way implementation at Western has been, it doesn't seem to be going great, but, you know, I've seen it two or three days.
Sure.
How is that going? And would that inform the Heather Hill project, particularly, I mean, let me give you a specific example.
Yeah.
Because it's just one-way during school hours.
Yep.
People forget.
Yes.
And I will admit, I, at least once pulling out of my drive, my drive, I, you know, twenty years of ingrained habit, I forgot, pulled out, face the wrong way. So, as you're exploring, what I'd like to hear, if that project needs revisions, but if, as you're exploring the Heather Hill project, perhaps part of the discussion should be just permanent one-way?
Yeah.
Because I don't know, I've seen plenty of other cars kind of going the wrong way, whether it was intentional or unintentional. I don't know that the temporary one-way is conducive to people really being consistent and following.
What is it at all, is it that way for the rest of our schools? For the schools that have a one-way, is it temporary one-way, like at Parker?
Typically.
Okay.
Typically, one-way. Flossmore Hills.
Flossmore Hills is...
Certainly. Eight-thirty to, you know, nine-thirty. You know, Heather Hill, Serena, Flossmore, even Parker, they just have longer runways around the buildings. You know, they have more street to soak up cars. I think part of the, and again, not to change the subject, but part of the challenge at Western is, you got about fifteen, and then they back up onto Western Avenue, either at the front of the school or the back of the school. So, I think that's part of that one. But, part of our conversation, back to the Heather Hill piece, is, you know, as we're having the one-way conversation regardless, looking at the benefit of arrival and dismissal times or a more permanent change.
Dana, is it possible that you could ask the village if they plan on leaving the safety fence up until the other fence is completely finished?
They are.
They are, okay.
They're going to put up the other fence behind, and then, once that is installed, they will go around the front, outside, and remove the construction fence.
Okay. Do we have video cameras around the school that pick up anything around the basin area? So, are we able to see, you know, video footage of, of kids that are trying to get in there, or, can we see that?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have an infrastructure or a team to monitor that footage in real time?
We do not.
Do we have the capacity to send alerts when there is movement that the cameras detect?
We do not.
Have we communicated with families, like, are they aware, for the families that, of, are they, first of all, are they our kids? Can we determine that? And can we communicate with, with the families? Like, we would at any school, right? Like, we've done that.
If we get the information, we will absolutely do that, the last...
No, I mean, if we see it on a video camera.
Yeah, well, we'll just use the actual situation that happened. You know, we went through the yearbook. We tried to identify who the child was. We just, I don't believe that we're able to.
Oh, okay.
So, we're absolutely prepared to have those conversations.
Have we communicated with our staff to talk with our students about maintaining safe distance from construction areas, not just around Heather Hill, but other areas? I mean, because looking forward, as you said, we're going to have construction around that building, and it is not going away for foreseeable future. So, I think those broader conversations need to happen in the classrooms, in homes, so kiddos understand that this is a fence, and horrible, that there's a hole there, there shouldn't be a hole, but, and, but, though, they, those kids need to understand that it's a barrier there that need not be crossed.
Yeah, we, we shared information with the students in the community last year, this returning to school. I believe it was part of the cool tools as well. So, as we have our PBIS expectations for the classroom, the bus, all those, there's one for the detention basin, and what those expectations for behavior are. And all the classes receive that instruction. It, it's not a one-and-done.
Yeah.
Certainly. I think you're right about having more consistent conversations, but we're certainly having them.
A wondering that I have, Dr. Smith, is, in this, this recent communication, is that Flossmore, the village of Flossmore hasn't honored a particular commitment, you know, to us. They, they made an arrangement with you, they have not honored that. That's regrettable. We have some asks now, what, how, how do we leverage that to make sure that we get what we need and address the concerns that our families have around safety? Like, I'm just wondering, how do we bring that together to make sure that we're all working to make sure that our kids are safe? And they're on the hook for it as well, not just us. So, I'm just wondering, how do we, in fact, do that?
It depends on which proposals you would like me to take forward.
Well, one thing that you said, I think is important, is there a way to have a conversation, like, can you talk to Bridget about the shift or the change? Like, what is the reason behind it besides getting it done as quickly as possible? Is there, and then, if there was a shift or a change, then what, what was the village thinking about in terms of how that impacted safety? Because I think what you're saying is, here was the plan that we thought about to make sure that our kids would be safe. And so, any change in the plan could necessitate, well, now that it's gonna be this, then maybe we would want to do this. Maybe we would also like to hire some temporary people, or maybe we would have already had Scott or whomever walking the ground. So, I just, maybe that's a good conversation to have with the village, because any kind of shift creates a ripple effect.
Trey, which projects, so, because I think that's, Dana's inviting you to say, or us to discuss, which pro, which specific items do you think we should be bringing to the village?
So, I think the most immediate is supervision, electronic supervision. Like, how do we make sure, to the best of our ability, that students are not getting over the, over their fence from a twenty-four-hour perspective? I agree with Michael's assessment that this is actually urgent. And so, if we don't have the monitoring capabilities to, to know something is happening in real time, then how do we get that as quickly as possible is probably my, my immediate response, you know, to that.
Would you say, Trey, then, that it could potentially be a joint effort that you're thinking? So, the time that our kids are there, you know, are we observing? But then, when it's not, is the village doing their supervision? And, you know, so maybe that's, again, another question for the village. What does monitoring the safety of that site look like? And can they put in surveillance, or can they do more than what they're doing during the times that the site is not active, if you will? That, you know, nine o'clock or eight o'clock when they finish to seven the next morning?
Trey, is your concern just during the construction process, that this would just be a temporary surveillance? Or are we looking forward to forever monitoring?
I think we have to, I think we have to consider a triage plan, given the current assessment that has been put out there. And I think that there also has to be a, a longer-term plan to figure out how do we make sure, again, because I think the safety concerns of the community are completely valid, and they don't go away once the detention basin is fully erected and/or the fence, right? And so, I think that there has to be room for, for that consideration and discussion in terms of what that could potentially look like. So, I'm thinking both, both and, short-term and long-term.
So, I guess I need to understand what the goal is, right? So, if the goal is, it seems to me there's separate issues, right? The, the, the construction project ongoing, seems like the contractor has not been diligent enough on, for example, keeping the fence, a fence. And it seems to me, given that that's gonna be done in two weeks, that's problem A. If there's a request from the community that essentially the retention pond be monitored twenty-four-seven forever, I don't know that that's our purview. We certainly have some influence as a district to ask the village to, to do that. It's not really our, I, I don't know. I don't know that it's our responsibility.
I, I don't know that it is, because I park in front of Levitt Park every day at three o'clock, and there's been standing water there for weeks, and no one's been in it, near it, or around it for the thirty minutes I sit there. So, I, I have a hard time, others, that's not fenced. So, I have a difficult time seeing, and it's less of a body of water at this time, but I'm not sure how, as Cam said, it's, I don't know, it's in our purview to maintain that, especially when, for the bulk of the time, it's going to be a dry bottom basin. So, I don't, I can see a hundred percent on mitigating and doing something for the remainder of the time of construction, having machinery, things of that nature, but I'm not sure, once it's grassland for, we'll call it ninety-eight percent of the time, that's, that's where my struggle is laying.
I think it's important that we understand that we've created an environment where there's this thing that's very closely adjacent to our school. And therefore, we have a responsibility to make sure it's as safe as we possibly can make it, as long as it continues to exist in its current form, whether that's during construction or after construction. If after construction, we see some safety issues, it's our responsibility, because we consented for it to be there. So, we have the responsibility to address it, whether it be through our own means or through the village, we have that responsibility. It's not escapable.
So, Dana, this reminds me of maybe three or four years ago, the issue of ice on sidewalks. And whose, whose sidewalk, who does the sidewalk belong? Because we had kids falling.
Sure.
Getting injured.
At Flossmore Park.
Right. So, what, help me remember how we handled that, and...
Well, we enforced the, the original agreement. It was the park district's responsibility. And that was lost between the village, the park district, and the school district. So, essentially, just clarified who was doing what, and we've been okay. If I'm remembering correctly, it was a park right by the pavilion, maybe down, down to the backstop of the first field there. Horrible ice, three, four inches thick, people were wiping out.
Like, people got hurt, like, significantly, significantly hurt.
Communication, identifying who was doing what, and then we haven't had a problem since.
So, so then this, I just want to make, just so I can understand who are all the stakeholders that need to be a part of this conversation, because it's not done yet, right? So, we can't, in some ways, we can't predict what the safety needs will be. It'll be, once it's done, then we need to be able to evaluate, assess. But that's not a conversation just within ourselves. So, then, is, is that something else than that you can talk to, that is on the list of things to have a conversation with Bridget?
I can absolutely add that, for sure.
And to the larger point, and I don't know, maybe Fran can give us some insight, but if we're in a situation where we're gonna have ongoing construction during the school year, there has to be some industry-best practices that we make sure that we're adhering to, to ensure the safety of our students. I, do you have anything to say on that, Fran?
We're already talking, having those conversations, when we start looking at Heather Hill addition. Pepper has a lot of experience starting buildings while students are still in them. There will be definite times that, you know, trucks will be allowed and not allowed, and there'll be fencing up and the whole thing, and our people will be on-site as well. So, yeah, there's, there's a lot of planning for safety and security that's, that's probably the... Let's put it this way, we start all of our construction meetings every week, that's what we start with.
Okay. Thank you.
And for sure, there's no way to do that all over the summer. Like, that has, that, we, it, students will be in person.
You can either, you can hope, but right now, even if they started Cas, I think the rough back of the envelope I saw is if they start Casimir Pulaski, they're anticipating being done on July eighteenth. That's with, of, you know, a few weather days in there.
Everything they are asking for two weeks of us pushing summer, so, so consider, like, school starting almost February.
Could be. That's why we're gonna start that conversation at the beginning of October.
Yeah, that'll be good. Okay, are there any other comments?
Have we had any issues during school with our students and the construction site?
No.
Did we have any issues, well, before we added extra personnel around for playground?
No.
So, okay.
But in all fairness, it's been seven days.
F.
About eight. Well, no, seven, because we're indoors today, I think we're indoor tomorrow because of the heat. Just the five last week, and then Thursday, Friday, the week before.
So, I, I think we, as a board, need to be clear on what our direction is.
We're lacking some information.
We are lacking some information. I think, to some degree, we're, I think we're, you know, we, we discussed our last board retreat, right, that we need to focus on higher-level policy stuff. And to some degree, we need to trust the administration to follow up on these things. At the same time, I, you know, if, if we're asking the administration to go to the village and insist on, say, ring cameras, I think we need to be clear about that. Like, we, we shouldn't leave it hanging. You know, I have my personal opinions about what's adequate. Like, I, I think someone walking the site before and after school probably should cover it, but I, you know, other people may have different opinions. But that's just the immediate construction. construction. Seems to me that, that, that should address the two weeks, I would think, but that's just my personal opinion. I don't know where everybody else falls and I'd like to reach a consensus and then make sure that, that Dana and his team have a clear direction.
So you're saying, you, you're talking about the period, the, the period of time that is just construction right now.
Yeah, well, that's the thing, I, I feel fairly comfortable in saying that, okay, so we, we've identified problems, we've identified holes into the fence on two occasions. Um, it sounds to me that the first one was, we dealt with, you know, Dana dealt with as soon as we learned of it. The second one we're, uh, learning about from Michael today, but, um, I want to make sure the immediate problem is addressed before we leave today. The longer term problem of my personal, again, my personal opinion, right, is that the idea of the area being permanently monitored ought to be a village issue, but we can certainly put our thumb on the scales if that's the goal of the board. Um, but, uh, but that also doesn't have to be decided today, cause we, we have, that would be after the two weeks. So, but, but, you know, I'm just really thrown out, this is my opinion to prompt everyone else to say.
Well, so I think immediately, the, the one thing immediately is somebody walking the, the fence, like tomorrow, right? That's the one immediate.
And not just somebody, I think somebody from like our staff, right?
Right.
Because we have kind of trusted that the village was maintaining that and they weren't, right? So we want to make sure, like from our perspective, the beginning of the school day, the end of the school day, there's no holes before kids get there, there's no holes as kids are going home.
But, and then also like a plan. So if Scott or whoever's walking and sees a hole, like it's a call, they're, or whatever it is, it needs to, that has to happen like right away. I'm, I, I think that, I think that should happen. Is, I think you have consensus for that should happen.
I agree that there, there needs to be immediate.
Tomorrow.
Inspection. Yep.
Consistently during the construction phase. Beyond that, I certainly think the technology exists where it could be monitored electronically 24/7 without someone sitting watching the camera. There can be alerts anytime there's motion detected in a certain proximity of the fence. And I know the technology exists to do that, where you can have an alert go to, whether it's emergency personnel or whatever, alert, there's movement around this fence and you see it.
Do you think we should do that?
Um, I think the village should do that.
I, I don't know if we should be the ones to execute, we can be the ones to.
That's all I'm asking.
I, I don't think that's something we should do. That would, that would be something that we have to work with, uh, either police, fire or whatever.
Trey?
Yeah, um, the immediate, you know, just calling it the triage plan, we need to have people out there immediately. I agree, I'm fine with that. I also agree with Michael in the sense that there are more discussion in terms of the logistics of how the, the technology should be monitored. I'm open for that discussion, but I do feel like we should have an electronic monitoring system in place in the longer term. So there's a, right now and then a later.
So that, actually this is good because we're talking about $150,000 in cameras.
Yeah.
In a minute. I can tell you that that number will be a factor of the project we will bring you back because this will not meet your needs.
Well, I don't know that, before we get there.
No, no, but I, I, they have to, with, I think we need to understand that they work in context. So I just wanted to make sure that we care, we carry over this conversation. I'm not stopping, I'm saying let's carry over this conversation.
No, I'm saying.
Into the security camera conversation as well because they're the same system. And so we can't, I would not recommend what we're going to talk about in three or four items as we're having this conversation because they will work not opposite of each other, but they won't meet your needs and then we'll install something that's not gonna get it done.
Right, so we need to do it in the context of the bigger picture.
Yes.
Yes.
So I don't know if they're mutually exclusive. I think that, and again, I want to be conscious of how much work we're asking to do on, that's not really directly connected to student achievement, et cetera, but I think I initially read the idea of ring cameras, I thought gee, that's ridiculous, but you know, from a cost perspective, it's what, 100, 200 bucks a camera? Let's say it's, let, let's, let's say it's 500 bucks a camera once you install them, put like a solar panel to power them, et cetera. Um, I know from my own experience that, you know, I have ring cameras all over my house and I turned off the notifications after a while because it's just too much stuff. But it, it, for my cost, maybe it's not a terrible idea from a cost effectiveness standpoint and a data gathering standpoint. It may be the case you put them up and pretty much down the road, you're like, yeah, nothing's happening. Um, a little concerned about the personnel costs and who's gonna absorb that and who's gonna be responsible for monitoring. So would it be reasonable for the board as a whole to say that our direction is please explore the issue with the village? Part of that exploration would be if the cameras on our building that we're discussing in a few minutes could accomplish this goal, well, okay, I guess an alternate quote would be of some value, but I actually, I'm suspecting that given the distance and just the angles that, that they're not gonna be an ideal solution for this particular request.
True.
But, um, so I don't know that's worth a ton of time rejigging the security camera contract. Um, you know, for example, I have a dog that's, as a puppy, was a little unfriendly towards passersby and so I put a camera like right on my sidewalk and it looks down the sidewalk and it, it does the job, right? Um, I had to put in a post and I had to put a little solar panel for it, so I probably spent 300 bucks on it, um, to get it all done, but it does the job. And then the problem, that problem mitigated over time, right? And it doesn't really serve much purpose anymore, but you know, something looking down the fence line, um, in a couple spots. Again, I, I think my initial reaction to the idea was like this is, I, I didn't like it, but I, I don't know, it's not, I don't know it's a terrible idea, but so, I, I'm trying to give you a consensus that you can act on.
I mean, I, I think this should be raised with the village, certainly. My only worry is that there, I know there are some reports out there on things that create false sense of security and it shifts the way, the environment and the community. So it's a sense of that this monitoring is protective and so, and that's not the case, right? It's to observe and see. And so I also don't want to create a false sense of security among, in, in the community of it's being observed and therefore, you know what I mean? So like, so sure, it triggers, we see it, it also includes a response and an immediate response and what does that look like? That's why I think this has to be village, right? Because it's like if it's on the weekend, I mean, and if the village says, yes, we want to do this, we want to go visit, then they're gonna be the ones that say, here's how we're gonna monitor it, here's, here's what it's gonna look like, here's what it will do, here's what it won't do, here's how it will impact the community. Um, so I think, it feels like to me that a lot of that is the village's responsibility. I would say that for, especially during non-school time. So that's why I think it's critical that, that, that we hear from them, what are you thinking about this area, especially when it's not school? Well, we want them to think about this. Yeah, that's, that's what we're telling them.
I'm not sure I'd rest all my laurels on, um, ring cameras because I usually get a ring notification three minutes after I'm in my house.
Yeah, that too.
So, you know, just.
I agree with Carolyn's point that it's not inherently, I don't know it's the most reliable safety solution. I think, but, but, but again, what I think and what actually happens are not necessarily, but, but my prediction is, let's say we put them up, um, we'll get a lot of, whoever's monitoring, we'll get a lot of sort of false notifications. Um, let's say it goes to the person sitting at the desk at the police department, um, but it only takes a few seconds to check those. I think what, what would happen in reality is the same thing we do with our own cameras at home, right? They give us information, we, we may, we eventually, a lot of us tend to stop looking at them. But, but it, it at least gave me peace of mind that, okay, this, you know, my puppy isn't harassing passersby anymore, right?
But after the fact.
Yeah, it's after the fact, though I don't think it's a necessary preventative measure. Um, you know, I think that, so either in practice, it's going, it, it may show that no one's trying to get over the fence. In practice, it may show that kids are and, you know, since that basin's gonna be empty most of the time, I'm not sure that requires a three minute response, right? It probably, it would be nice though to follow up with the kids, the parents, say, hey guys, please don't do that. But I mean, we would have more information if we went down this road at what I think is minimal cost. Uh, the cost goes up if we have to start assigning, you know, we of the village have to sign personnel specific, you know, uh, new personnel as opposed to an existing personnel to monitor it. But it's, my, my point is it seems like a worthwhile experiment and I would characterize it as experiment. It certainly would characterize as this is gonna solve safety problems and nobody should treat it that way, but I think it should help, you know, these are the facts, we have video of what's happening on that fence and this is or isn't happening. Um, I don't know. That, that's my thoughts, so worthy, it may be a worthy experiment, but.
Yeah, I think this, the discussion itself and future discussions, I think are extremely important. Um, I, I agree with Carolyn's point around pushing the, the, the village for more accountability because, I mean, ultimately this board made the decision to move forward with the project and we need to make sure that safety is paramount and at the forefront of all of our discussions. And so just ensuring that we are pushing ourselves as well as our partners to do the same, I think is essential.
So we agree, the consensus is immediate solution is, uh, someone's gonna walk the fence at appropriate times during the day and, and we're not gonna have any more holes or if we are, we're gonna detect them and respond to them immediately. And, um, the administration will explore the monitored piece with the village, whether it's Mr. Estelle or someone else, uh, in the coming weeks. Is that, is that the, the sense of the board?
Yes.
Yeah, you, yeah, you, you've captured everything that we want you to take to, yeah.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the 2024-25 budget.
Hello.
Hello. Okay. So let's talk about the budget. Kind of start this way all the time, what is a budget, just to remind ourselves, um, it's a roadmap, it is a bunch of assumptions put together in one big document, um, they are not actuals, um, those will come at the end of the year, um, and it really is a compilation of every decision that you've made over the last year, including collective bargaining agreements, um, staffing, curriculum, et cetera. I take all that information and I basically put a dollar amount to it. Um, on the revenue side, you have your major areas, which are the local property taxes, your state sources, including evidence-based funding, uh, the mandated categorical grants and your federal grants, and your federal sources, your, your federal grants. Okay. So let's talk about the 2023 property taxes, that just came out, um, that were due on August 1st, because I know there was a lot of shell shock for a lot of people. So kind of going through this a little bit, um, first of all, new property came in higher than we had anticipated. We had expected about half a million dollars and it came in closer to a million dollars. Now, what does that do for the, most of the residents? Nothing. Um, putting the rate on, that was about an additional $44,000 worth of property taxes for District 161. Um, we did put those, the bond and interest back up, we filled our debt service extension base, that's the D, the DCEB, um, so that did increase taxes of about $400,000 just to get those tax, the bonds back up to fully funded. Um, then what we did was also CPI. So this is this year and last year, was the only two times since PTEL, the Property Tax Extension Limitation Act went into play that we even got any, that we hit 5% actually because CPI was higher than 5%. We were capped at 5%. So the 5% would add that 1.1 million dollars onto the total extension. 161's total extension increase was one point, about 1.6 million dollars. So that's the size of the pie then. So the increase better cost all the taxpayers would have been 1, 1.6 million dollars. If everyone had the same piece of that pie from the prior year, you would have seen people getting about a 5 and a half percent increase. We know that the bills were a lot higher than that. So the question is why? Now, I know that these are small, so I'm gonna show you which pieces to focus in on, okay? These are coming straight off of the Cook County Assessor's website, okay? Um, down here in the blue, what you're going to see, and this is for the village of Flossmore, this one, you're gonna see that when we started out in 2022, the residents bore 85% of our total bill and industry, anything non-residential bore 15% of the total tax bill. Then we had a reassessment. The assessor put on their assessment, the total percent for the residents raised to 89% and industry went down to 11%. After everything went through the board of review, so if you appealed your assessment, it went to the board of review. Now the residents bore 90% of those tax bills and re, and the industry only went down to 10. So for the village of Flossmore, there was a 5% increase from 2022 levy to the 2023 levy of how much was borne by the residents. And that's an additional percentage on top of what we levied. Got it?
And, and Fran, that's totally based on how many people appeal?
It's based on, so let's go up here.
And.
Let's go up here.
Okay.
Let's answer that. So at the top, in the blue, again, corresponding to the blue down here.
Yeah.
The value of the homes went from here to here on the assessor.
Yeah.
And then depending on who, um, appealed.
Yeah.
There was a 1% decrease for the total amount.
Okay.
On the industry side for Flossmore, went from here, down 1%, but then after the board of review, it got to a negative 6%.
Okay.
Okay? So what are we saying? We're saying that the non-residents are probably appealing in greater number and they're getting greater relief. Remember that negative one number on the residents. Let's flip through all of your villages that make up 161. Here's the village of Homewood. The village of Homewood started and the residents at 67%, assessor brought them to 73. At the end of the day, they ended up with 75% of the bill, so they increased from 67% to 75% of the burden put onto the residents. Meanwhile, the industries ended up, starting at 33% and ended up down to 25%. Again, at the top, residents appealing went down 1% and industry went down 14.
I don't want to strip your flow, but I, can I pause on one thing on the concept of residents appealing?
Yep.
I guess my take on this situation is that this is a Cook County decision that's largely outside of our control.
It is completely out of our control.
I'll tell you, look, I appeal my taxes every year. By the way, if you guys don't know, there are lawyers who will do it on a contingency. So there's, I, I think everyone should appeal all their property taxes every year or every three years, whenever it comes up. Um, it doesn't cost you anything. Yeah, but, um, you know, my property taxes went up 50%, um, which would be great if my home value actually also did, but, uh, you know, this time they just didn't care, right? So the appeal was rejected after a 50% raise. So I don't know if, 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 if I got my wish and everyone in Flossmore appealed their property taxes every year, I don't know that it would have changed this outcome.
I don't know that it would have either.
Okay.
I don't know that it would have either because the board of review seems to be giving more credence to commercial property than they are to residents. They're allowing, they are adjusting the assessments more on commercial property than they are to our residents. So if you move on, let's look at the same thing for Chicago Heights. Chicago Heights, man. at the same thing for Chicago Heights. Chicago Heights, man, I don't, I mean, the assessor actually had the homeowners having less of the burden. And then after they got through Board of Review, it's more than where they were. So the residents went down again, 1% on that top, and the industries went down 34% on the, on the commercial property. That's huge. In Hazelcrest, you're seeing the same trend. From 73% of the total burden to 82% of the total burden. And again, 1% after the Board of Review for the residents. And what was that number? 14% for commercial property. So that whole pie shift, it's, it's not just the increase on the total levy, it's who's paying it.
Have you heard a lot from residents? Because I have a big shock.
I honestly have not heard from one, not even one.
So I haven't either. And I guess I, is anyone on the board?
One.
I.
I'm sorry, yes, I did hear from one. I did hear from one.
Yeah, so I guess I interpreted from the lack of complaints that people understand that it's not us, right? That this is Cook County shifting the burden. But I don't know, I don't want to assume.
I think that's why they're not complaining to us, because they realize it's not our decision to do it.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
I mean, I think people are unhappy, but you're saying, are they blaming us?
Well, that and, which will lead to my ultimate next question, is at some point, what are the, and this is not your responsibility, Fran, to lay out the correct strategy for this. But the question, I think, for the South suburbs as a whole is, what do they do about this? Because this board, the village board, the high school board, doesn't have any control.
So I think right now, part of your problem is you've got the assessor's office fighting with the Board of Review.
Is the Board of Review appointed or elected?
Elected.
Okay.
Yeah. So what Kegy did, the assessor, was he changed the way commercial property was being assessed. And it brought their assessments up. They started on the north side when they made that change. And there was a huge yell from the commercial properties. But the idea was if we're going to do this, you know, how do we fix this problem? But what it did was switched the burden over to the commercial properties, which didn't go over. Now, the, the valuation that the assessor's using is the same, but then the commercial properties are appealing to the Board of Review. And the Board of Review is essentially, I mean, heck, in the, in the, I mean, look at Chicago Heights. The Board of Review took the assessors and wiped it out completely.
Fran, if we look from a historical perspective, and there's been a reassessment, is it typical that immediately after the reassessment, you see commercial getting greater relief than residential?
This is the first time we've actually really been looking at it. This is the first time the information's been available to us on the assessor's website. Over the last probably seven, eight years, the amount of information that's been available to us on the websites has increased in volumes. So we've never really had the ability to do that before. If we had asked for it before, they would have handed me literally a list of pins this high, and I would have had to crunch it myself.
Are you aware of any conversations that give greater context to what we're seeing? Or is it just what we're speculating?
I know the assessor is out there talking to a lot of groups. We just heard him speak to the Scope Group, our lobbyist group. So it was a bunch of superintendents and business officials, you know, listening to the assessor talk. As a matter of fact, that's how I've got these, these charts, is that he pointed them out to us that he has put them up onto the website. So there is some conversation happening. But like I said, I, it sounds like there's some headbutting between the assessor's office and the Board of Review.
Is part of the problem, I don't know this as well as you might. My perception of the north side dispute was that within the city of Chicago and the northern suburbs, it was, especially within the city of Chicago, it was generally perceived that the property taxes people were paying were actually extremely low for residents, and that the businesses were historically carrying a lot of the burden. But down here, the math works out differently, right? Because, one anecdote, right, Jonathan Kane used to be across from Village Hall, ultimately left there, because I think he was telling his property taxes were something like, 25,000? I don't remember the numbers. Whatever, I just remember the number being, at the time, he was trying to get the village, this was years ago, to extend a TIF. When I heard what his taxes were for that little building, and I'm like, how could a salon possibly support that, right? So my sense for the southern suburbs is that because we don't have enough industry, because home values are lower than the rest of Chicagoland, that the tax rate, whether you're measuring the tax rate as, you know, your percentage of your home value, or for a business, well, it's not formally defined this way. I think the business mostly cares, how much of my annual revenue is going to property taxes?
Right.
The tax rates are high for everyone. Is that accurate? Or, you know, I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, is part of the problem here is that Fritz is trying to unify and make things more uniform and fair, but a one-size-fits-all approach isn't working for the South suburbs. Or do I have that?
I don't know that it's working for all of Cook County.
Okay.
I'll go there. We are the only county in the entire state that isn't based on 33% of the assessed value.
So the solution there would be the state legislature?
Yeah. It is such an overly, there's just so much law and rule around this levy that I think they, it's like playing whack-a-mole. They try and, you know, fix this problem and this one pops up. So they whack at that one, and then another one pops up. Honestly, I mean, I think the only way to fix it is to throw it all out and start from the beginning. But that's me.
I agree. But I think ultimately, the residents of the South suburbs need to find a way to make their voices heard by the state legislature. I mean, we could, we could, we could put a lot of effort into gripe into the Board of Review. But, you know, my personal opinion is that the system is too complex, and therefore it doesn't respond well to attempts to tweak it. And our neighbors in Indiana, not that I suggest we should be like Indiana, right? But they just have like a flat, was it 1% or something? Property taxes are just X. A simpler system is easier to tweak than something as complex as the Cook County property tax system.
And people don't understand it.
Well, you do.
Right. But I mean, I, so many times, you know, when I'm, you know, when you're out with the neighbors or whomever, and somebody talks about how, you know, well, my assessment, my assessment won't weigh up, my bills are way, it's really a function more of CPI and how that property tax shift is working between your commercial property and your residence. It's, it's that which part of it is your slice, and what is your value in relation to your neighbors and the commercial property in town? It's just very, very complicated at this point.
I think, I think we know that for decades. As long as education is heavily dependent on property taxes as a means of funding, that there's going to be significant issues and inequities. And that's been known for four or five decades. No question about it.
Yep.
Yeah. And I, and I think the funding, you know, the evidence-based funding plan out of Springfield is a step in the right direction, I guess. I think, I thought it was, I mean, you criticize little parts of it, but it's overall planned. I just.
Isn't there a clock on that? Isn't there a 10-year clock?
There, I don't know if there is.
On the funding formula?
On the equity-based funding, where it's a 10-year timeline to get to the appropriate levels for all districts?
If there is, they're not going to hit it.
We know that.
So I, but that brings me back to, at the end of the day, isn't it Springfield that needs to address this, right? So we need the evidence-based funding program to continue. We need it to be adequately funded. We need property taxes, frankly, we need to, the legislature should revisit the old Supreme Court decision about 50% funding.
Yeah.
Because, you know, that's not working.
If we look at it, even with our property taxes being as large of a percent as they are, our districts are typically in the neighborhood of about 20% underfunded. You go to other districts that have lower property tax rates, and they're better funded.
Yeah.
And that just points back to the overall system of property taxes being such a significant part of funding for education.
Yep. All those things. We'll talk about some more of them. Here's Olympia Fields, the last one. Same, same thing. 75 to 81. 1% on the residents. Actually, only 2% on the commercial properties. So they were probably the, the best, but. So, speaking of, so the second half of our collections on the 2023 levy, I'm sorry. The first half of the 2023 collections were low. So what we took it in the spring. We generally see about 48%, and we came in at 45%, which was a little concerning. In this budget, I still budgeted to 94%, which means that our second installment, which is just coming in right now, I'm hoping that we're making up some of that. So you're going to see a heavy first, second installment of the prior year in my budget. It's heavier than it usually is, which is increasing your revenue side a little more than usual. We also then have the first half of the 2024 levy, which I'm still making a 45% assumption of collection, I'm sorry, 48% assumption of collection, for a total of 94% in total collection. Collections have been going a little crazy on us. You'll remember that I was coming back to you and we were at like 91 and 92% collected. And I was starting to really panic with all of the PTAB, you know, refunds that we were getting. Well, they've, I wouldn't say they've dried up, but they've slowed up considerably. And last year, our 2022 levy was a little over 95% collected. So I follow 95% collection up with a 45, as opposed to 48% collection rate on the first installment of the 2023. Bottom line is, I don't know where this is going right now. I really don't. So I kept everything, same status quo, the 94% collection that we've done the last couple of years. But what that's showing is a heavier increase on your tax revenue than we normally would see. So again, spring collection at that bottom was at 45.88%. So I've kept it to 94, which is a 48.12%. I usually wouldn't be looking at a collection that heavy. I'll know where that number really is coming in in the next month or two. Because they, remember, those taxes were due August 1st. So we're, we're seeing them come in now. Then for the 2024 levy, and we'll see that coming in this year, again, we're going to stick with a 48% collection rate, which is where we usually come in. So we'll see. So that would give you a total of $24.7 million of local property taxes coming in. On the state side, we are still a Tier 2 school. We are still at 78% funded. Our base funding minimum is almost $15 million. Our tier funding was an additional $255,000 for a total of $15.1 million of evidence-based funding. We are still waiting to see if we qualify for the property tax relief grant again, which is another 50 million. And based on how high we've been up on that list for all these last several years, I have a hard time believing we're not back on it again. So expect that number to go up by another $2 million, give or take. On the state side also, private facilities, mandated categoricals, we're getting about $700,000 in because we have so many students at the private facilities. Transportation also is, is up about $800 and a million dollars, on the revenue side, that is. And we have that early childhood grant of about $440,000. On the federal side, our Title I dollars are coming in at about $400,000, Title II at about $95,000. IDEA special ed grants just shy of 605, about 578. And we have the very last of the SIR III funding, that's $788,000. And that's to be all expended by the end of September. So when you look at it by total category, our local property taxes are at 56% of our total revenue structure. Our state, state income is coming in about 38% of our total structure, and the federal grants making up about 6. Okay. The bar on the left of the two is your local property taxes. The bar on the right is your state evidence-based funding. Those big jumps have been coming really because of the property tax relief grants. When they start increasing, we've gotten about $2 million, $2 million, $2 million, maybe just short, 1.8, 1.9, 2, about that for all those years. So you can see, our local property taxes, with the exception of this year, have been pretty steady, even a little lower. We keep trying to hold that number tight. And the state number has been going up and up, which is a good trend for us, unless, of course, the state stops paying their bills. But we'll cross that problem if and when we get to it again. Remember this graph as we continue our talk down the line. On the expenditure side, the budget is split really into pieces. There's your fund. The majority of your fund would be your education fund and your operations and maintenance fund. I will tell you, right now, you've got a lot of money sitting in capital projects because of the bond proceeds, but your normal operating budget. Your function, which are the activities that, where the expenditures are charged. So for example, regular education, special education, buildings and grounds, those kinds of things. And your object are the type of expense. So salaries, benefit, services, supplies. When you look at objects, so salaries, benefits, et cetera, you'll see, obviously, we are still very much a people-driven industry. So 60% of your total budget is spent on salaries and benefits. You've got about 19% on services. Only about 4% of your budget is actually supplies and materials. So it always cracks me up when people are like, when I'm trying to balance a budget, and they're like, well, you just spend way too much money on, name the thing. I'm like, my total budget only spends 4% on things. It's people. It's people and it's services. Your capital outlay, there is some of your construction money there. So that's 6% of the total budget. Your other objects, a lot of that is special education outplace students. It's also bond and interest. You can see by function, by far, regular programs, your regular education programs is the most, it's, it's the biggest one up there. That, that's what you spend it on. All expenses going into classrooms, that's pretty much all of your classroom teachers. Down below, next to that, you'll see your special education programs. Those two pieces make up 34% of your entire budget. Coming on down to the right-hand side, you'll see your, your operations and maintenance and your construction work. You'll also see transportation is huge. But those are your big rocks. Our total budget on the revenue side right now is we are anticipating $48.4, $48.4 million coming in on the revenue side. We actually took in $46 million last year. We were budgeting 42.6. $2 million of that increase came from your property tax relief grant, because we don't know we're getting it until we get it. And our budgets are already passed, okay? Also, tax revenues were high. Also, tax revenues were higher because of the 5% and because we saw 95% collection rate that we weren't anticipating. On your expenditure side, for your budget this year, we're looking at a $47 million budget on the expense side that is excluding construction. Construction comes in at about $2.6 million, because you're going to start seeing the really big numbers come in next year's budget when we start doing the addition. That brings you an operating surplus of almost $1.4 million, a total deficit of 1.2, but again, $2.6 million will be coming from your bond proceeds. So, you really want to look at your operating budget. So, it's a $1.4 million surplus, and that's what I want, we're going to talk about it. Last year estimate, I'm sorry, so I'm still calling it estimated because the auditors aren't finished finalizing those numbers for us yet, but we actually expended $43 million. We had budgeted $44 million, so we were about $600,000 to the good on that budget. It was an actual operating surplus of $2.6 million, again, about $2 million of that being from the property tax relief grant. So, last year, we ended up in a surplus, and this year, we are predicting a surplus. I usually have a big arrow here telling you not to worry about your deficit because you have plenty of fund balances to cover it, but this year, we don't have a budget deficit, we have a budget surplus. One of the other things that we do is we do the site-based expenditure reports. These are from last year's numbers for the state. They ask us to see how much we are spending per pupil in each building. You will remember that Western Avenue has to be lower than the others, because all the others are a Title I building, but the others are obviously pretty close, they're neck and neck. Flossmore Hills is a little higher, but they have our most tenure teachers in that building. So, I want the board to think about a couple of things before we actually approve. I've pushed, I've asked Dana to push adoption, the hearing and adoption, until the second board meeting of September as opposed to the next one, because I'd like y'all to go home and think about it for a while. We have two options in my mind here, and you can probably tell me to go with this one, and we can push that decision a little further down as we start talking about levy, and really, that decision's going to have to come at levy time anyway, but we could, CPI this year is 3.4%. I suspect we will also get the property tax relief grant. We could forego a 3.4% levy. We could flat levy and still be in a surplus position.
Assuming our collections come in.
Assuming our collections stay, correct.
Will we know the collections before we have to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay.
We will know the 2023 collections, yes, before you know. I will probably, we will definitely have a really good handle on that before you need to vote on the 2024 levy. I'll have a pretty good handle on where our collections are at the next board meeting for August. Then, we still get some trickle in, but at least I'll know what August was. So, we could do that. That would be, my estimates, about $800,000 off of your surplus. So, you'd still be at a surplus position, but we could flat levy. Your other option and things that you might want to think about is, there's been a lot of discussion about an early childhood center. You do not have any bonding capacity for 10 years. You could put on your CPI, take last year's surplus, take this year's surplus, and bank it for construction of an early childhood center.
Just to add context, Ms. Coleman asked tonight about full day pre-K. That's a school-size issue. We don't have the space for it. And so, realistically, to meet what our needs could be in 10 years, you're probably adding, it's probably between four and eight classrooms if we wanted to continue to expand that program, so you can see how that cost would add up.
This sounds like a fantastic item for discussion in our next goals.
Yeah.
Sure.
So, we'll revisit this as a discussion item on the ninth. Well, you can all kind of just ponder what I just dropped on your lap. And then, we will have the public hearing and the adoption on September 23rd, regardless of what you decide. I can, I can adjust those numbers or let them ride. And quite honestly, it's a budget. You could really just let it ride until you decide on your levy and continue to have this conversation over the next couple of months. They're good problems to have, but it's still a decision that you're going to have to make. Questions?
Do you see more on the fence on extending the levy than I've ever seen you?
Yeah, me too. This is weird.
It is weird. Weird position for me to be in. I look at it, and I guess I would just be going, oh, no, you need to, you need to put on your levy and you need to keep it going. But when your revenues are growing by that property tax relief grant amount, and then being added to your base funding minimum, I said, remember that, that graph. Our state revenues are growing significantly now. That's both a good problem and bad for those of us who lived through the era of the state doesn't pay its bills.
Yeah.
That is very frightening. However, we have really healthy fund balances. So, after a year of this huge tax bill that most of your residents have seen, the idea of doing a flat levy, and again, we can only promise that our total amount will be reasonably the same that we're levying now, because I can't even promise it to the penny because of the way the system functions, but it'll be close. You have the ability to absorb 800,000 and still be okay moving forward, in my opinion.
What?
I see that, and I guess my question is this, and this, I hope this is a fair question. If we are at 78%, that means we're 22% underfunded. How would that be utilized in the ideal world? If we were fully funded, how would we utilize that 22%?
You're asking the wrong person.
Yeah.
That's your answer?
Yeah, I just put numbers to what you guys decide educationally.
I was going to say, I think it'd be the brilliant minds at that back table. I think you're probably looking at programs, you're looking at services, you're looking at...
I'm curious.
Capital improvements. I think you're looking, it's a...
I could see capital right away, but outside of that?
Let's put aside capital. I'd be curious to, you know, what's our wish list? Michael wins the lottery.
It's an eight-figure number.
And he wants to give us $10 million a year.
15.
Well, let me throw this out there, though. If you build the early childhood center, you need to staff the early childhood center.
Correct.
And that's an ongoing, big-ticket item.
And there goes the...
Ever increase.
Yep.
Back table?
I don't know that we have an answer for that, if I'm being perfectly honest. I don't know that we would have one unless we dedicated some time to it.
Like I said, good problem, but a problem.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we can come up with anything, but if we don't reasonably expect 22% out of 50 million, I'd rather not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fran.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fran.
You can stay, though.
By the way, I'm sure that the audience leaving during your presentation had nothing to do with you. This is always my favorite presentation. My favorite part of the meeting is the budget, and I just don't want you to...
I truly do not take it personally.
My heart lit up when I got my binder.
I know it did.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Bloom Township trustee appointment for District 161.
So, we have a new state law. It now makes the trustees of the township treasurers one representative from every district in the treasurer's area. We need to make a determination by the second meeting of September, I believe it is. It can be either a board member or it can be an administrator.
Oh.
It is up to the board and what their privy is. I know you're all just clamoring to do it. I am volunteering myself for that duty, should you...
Thank you.
Be so inclined.
Got about 10 years, right?
I think we all, yeah.
Three. Oh, no, I, yeah, there'll be a lot of transition, I'm sure. You know, we're looking at a new general ledger system, and we're also looking at Dr. Grossi is getting ready to retire, so there'll probably be some, and I think he's looking for some, to have some people on who kind of know the ropes. So, I am volunteering to do that for at least the next three years.
How many people are going to be sitting on this board?
How many?
I don't know.
I want to say, it's, it's, I want to say it's like 10 or 11. It's going to be a little unruly.
It's big.
It's going to be big.
I'd say it's 14 municipalities feed into Bloom Township.
So, it's every municipality plus every school district in Bloom Township?
Well, it's just, it's just the school treasurer's office. So, it's just a representative from every school district that feeds Bloom.
Got it.
Yeah. So, thank you for volunteering. You're welcome.
Absolutely. We vote next meeting, right?
Yeah.
Right, oh, good, okay.
We can vote on it twice.
Yeah. The next item on the agenda is the security camera project.
I would, I would pull this.
Okay.
So, we can, based on the conversation tonight, really, in that monitoring piece, we'll have, just go back and see where those costs are. I can tell you when we looked previously, it was somewhere around $200,000 per year.
Oh, for just the monitoring piece?
Now, that had an AI laid over the top of it that actually did the monitoring, and then a person would respond, but that's why we backed away from it originally. That software piece was around $200,000 a year. So, Leonard and I will take a look. We will bring you back a, an updated proposal, and we'll go from there.
But, in context with the conversation with the village...
Yes.
I don't know, what, what do you mean?
Because if the village says, yes, we will take this on, then you're just going to bring this back to us.
We can't.
No.
We can't. It has to be a unified system, because if we're asking multiple agencies to remotely access, right, whatever we put on the back of Heather Hill has to be part of the main process, right? It has to be a unified system, or we end up, we end up with too many patchwork pieces, and we know from history that those just don't work, so...
Well, no, that's not what I'm saying. If the village says, we will own, let's just say, in a perfect world, the village says, we will own this. Are you saying they would ask to put the cameras on our buildings, or...
On our system?
No.
On our system?
I'm not sure. I know that it has to be one system. It cannot be two separate systems, whether or not, and I would say we would own that, so whether or not we build, again, this isn't, we can't walk away from this conversation thinking it's just a few Ring cameras, and so...
No, I don't think so, but I'm saying, let's just say that, that the village said...
I wouldn't do that. I wouldn't connect them.
Let's say the village said, we want to put cameras in Flossmore Park.
Yep.
Because we want a surveillance system to make sure that it's safe. That would have nothing to do with us.
Correct.
Like, we wouldn't ask them to put the cameras on Parker so that they could see Flossmore Park, right? It would be a separate system where they would be monitoring, they would, it would be them.
That's not what I heard tonight. Now, I, I think there's, there is something about putting cameras in the grass around, but again, they would say, no, because that's our property. So, again, either we're going to give them another easement.
Ah.
Well, the easement covers the fence. They can just attach some stuff to the fence. That's what I was thinking. I may be oversimplifying things, but solar-powered camera bolted to the fence, the permanent fence, shouldn't require any infrastructure, any, again, it may be overly optimistic.
I think so.
Well, your, your comment raises a question in my mind about, I didn't see anything in memo about how, I know, how does, how would this affect how the village police access our cameras when they need to?
Well, because, so, this is why I want to pull this, because we're, we're having really in-depth policy conversations that I haven't thought of. Even beyond that, I wouldn't want to give another municipality control of our process. The step before that would be working with the board to clarity about what are you trying to monitor? Do you just want somebody to monitor if kids are walking back there, then maybe they can throw up a post with some motion, I don't even know how they would power those, or communication, all of those things. We're either providing an easement or running all that wiring if we're not, and we're doing an integrated system that's on our buildings, then what we're presenting now would not cover that. And so, we need to go back and at least come up with what those options could be, and then we can return to the board. Yeah, the village said, yes, all-in, but my gut says they're not going to know what all-in is until we bring them a solution that says, this is, this is what we mean when we say that, and this is the level of coverage that we would expect, and then they can kind of go from there, but at least we would know what that would look like.
And one of the policy conflicts, right, is you've been pretty adamant historically that, no, the village, the village police will not have real-time access to our camera systems, because there's all kinds of problems with that.
True.
It has to come through, someone at the school district needs to grant that access, right?
Or, or an emergency.
Yeah.
I mean, we trust them. I think a part of this system will be, hey, there's an emergency. I don't know that I care what emergency it is, as long as you, if a police officer, the police chief tells us there's an emergency, check whatever you want. I think that's, we could work through some of those pieces. But it would really be, you know, what, what are we trying to watch back there? Fundamentally, on our end, we could see the west side, the west-facing side of that detention basin that I think is 40 yards from the boundary of the school.
But, so, I'm a little confused.
Also, remember, the current construction fence is set out much further than the final fence.
Yeah. So, a couple of things, then. The type of monitoring that you're talking about wouldn't be turned off on the weekend.
I don't know that we can turn it on. So, those are the questions that I have to go back. We don't, we don't have cameras that we monitor. We can reallocate educational personnel, but that's, that's where we would be if, if we're talking about have, having a monitored system during the school day.
I don't, I don't think of it as a monitored system. I think of it as a system that alerts you based on whatever criteria we establish for being alerted. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, right, yes, I get it, but somebody has to manage the alert, is what I'm saying.
Right, and that's where I think the conversation comes in with the village at that point.
Right.
I mean, that's definitely a village conversation. We're not going to have personnel to be alerted to respond to whatever the situation is.
But it monitors everything, right? So, we're not even, so it would not just be the basin. It would be any activity that goes on.
Well, our...
When we couldn't just say, we don't want to know about that thing.
I visualize, whether it's integrated...
And frankly, commercial solutions are much different than residential solutions.
Yeah, whether it's an integrated system or not, there will be some component that's dedicated for monitoring or overseeing the basin and alerting anytime there's something going on that's beyond whatever...
Alert and response. So, is the board comfortable, then, with this for one school and not taking into consideration all of our schools? I guess I'm, I, I, I want to, I want us to be very cautious with the amount of time that we're asking Dana and his team to put into this, in the, on the front end of it, because we really can't, as a board, say, we're just going to do this for Flossmore Hills. We really need to be, then, thinking about our, our, our whole, the whole district, and because we haven't talked about that yet, and we haven't...
It's a unicorn. It's not a whole district issue.
Well, it's not, though, right? It's not, because this is in front of us now, because it's specific, it's a very specific thing, it's the basin, but we've not done any kind of analysis, or like, what are the other blind spots? Like, the one-way, I had forgotten that we had one school that didn't go one way yet. So, I, whenever I'm thinking about one school, I'm thinking about all the schools, and are there any other blind spots? I remember when we were doing the work at Parker, and that became a big wet marsh with, you know, the big orange...
I remember when we were doing the work at Parker and that became a big wet marsh with, you know, the big orange tape there that was not so great. But we didn't really think about it. So now we have an opportunity. And if we're thinking about Flossmore Hills, I don't, I think we need to think about, we just need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and thinking about all the schools, especially because we're gonna have construction at all the schools for a while.
I, I think from a construction standpoint, whatever safety standards we decide to go forward with, if that's even necessary, it would apply across all schools. Uh, the one way obviously is a separate conversation. But I think specifically, we're talking about an element that exists at one school that doesn't exist at the other schools. Now, are we saying that we want some type of alert system at all the schools?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Like, our, we're responsible for that. So here's what I imagine. If we put, let's just say, we do it, we find the two hundred thousand dollars a year to put it in, and now Flossmore Hills pick, is picking up no problems with the basin, but we've got fights or whatever happening back there. That could be true of any of our schools. So we now are responsible for a system that is telling us that there is a problem. And we're saying that, sure, the purpose is the basin, but we know good and well, I know, for, I can tell you right now, I'll put it this way. There are things happening behind schools that maybe we would want to capture. I just don't want us to ignore that if we're talking about safety, and we're talking about safety of a school, that we're not doing it within the contest of an entire district.
I, I certainly understand where you're coming from, and I think some of what you're talking about is inherent anytime you have a school. I think the basin is outside of that in terms of what issues could exist related to safety. So I think that is somewhat separate. But a, as a part of a bigger conversation, if we're saying, hey, look, we want to monitor or have something in place for all our schools, then certainly we look at it from that standpoint. But I certainly think that the basin is separate from everything else.
What, what I liked about the Ring solution, it's not a commercial solution. Here's what I like about it. Not our problem, number one. Number two, nobody knows enough about the problem to actually determine what the appropriate solution is. It's an experiment, right? I, I'm of the opinion, I, I understand why lots of people that worry that kids are gonna be climbing this fence. I'm very skeptical that's actually ever gonna happen. The advantage to the ad hoc, non-commercial Ring solution is you gather data for a few months and then you know, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I'm right. Maybe somewhere in between, right? And then the community, preferably working with the village, because I still don't see that it's our responsibility, can make, you know, and, and the village and everyone involved can make appropriate adjustments to, okay, now that we have some information about what's actually happening with the structure, we can come up with an appropriate plan. I do not want. That's it. I am lightly curious about what the AI option is, et cetera. I, um, I, I kind of agree with both Michael and Carolyn on, yes, the detention basin is unique. But, you know, other schools have their own unique problems. You know, Western Avenue has that whole area behind it that, now, I don't really want to know what all the teenagers do going down there. But, you know, very frequently there are cars parked in front of my house, and I know that there's kids back there, and I, I'm sure they're Bible study or whatever. So, uh, you know, uh, if we wanna have that conversation, but I don't think it's worth a ton of resources. So, let's give data a chance to bring it back, but I don't know, it, it's not worth hours and hours and hours of time. In my opinion. I mean, if you guys disagree, then.
Oh, I agree. It's already been, I think, way too much time spent, way too much time spent.
Yeah, I think the challenge is, you know, as we, as we look at tonight's meeting agenda, right? It's not our project, but it's our project. I think it's, it'd be nice to say to the village, hey, go do this. I think as we, as we shift our focus from other areas that the board's identified are important to this, we either have to do it or not. And I think if we, if we want to do those things, we can, we can certainly recommend to the village, but certainly along the same lines as the schedule. If they make a different choice, they make a different choice. The consequence for all of you is being unfulfilled. And so if we are expecting other people to act on our behalf, I think we're setting ourselves up for disappointment. And so we should probably look to control what we can, identify what those pieces are, and then we just move forward. Good partners. I, I think we have a, a great relationship with the village, and that's certainly seen us through a number of issues. But on our end, I would probably recommend just being a little bit more directive as opposed to, hey, what do you think about?
Okay, so how about, how about this as a way to minimize burden on the administration, but get to it. You can sell me on a more expensive AI system if there are other benefits.
Yeah.
If as part of that system, we also get to point a few cameras at the detention basin and tell it to monitor that basin during certain hours. Great.
Yeah, no, no, we, we'll bring that option.
If we have to pay two hundred thousand dollars more and there's no benefit to those schools, and it's only for that, can we agree that that's probably not helpful?
Oh, certainly, certainly.
Agreed.
Okay. Does, does that help? A little?
It, it helps as much as can be helped. So we'll bring this back.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the ECR 2023-24 Illinois Assessment of Readiness data. Exciting.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Different from Fran. I am not volunteering for any boards or committees as a part of this presentation.
Yeah.
And so just thinking about our prior discussions, we want to make an effort to bring more data back to the board to discuss more frequently as we get data updates, also discussing our school improvement plans on a more frequent basis. And this, uh, this opportunity of additional report that we received from ECR really provides us with that. Um, so ECR gives us a, a report on IAR only every year. As at our previous meeting, we talked about preliminary IAR scores, which are still preliminary. Uh, we'll, we'll receive the final, uh, state level comparison data soon. Um, but the ECR data really provides us with how our students are growing in comparison to their previous year's performances on ECR. We've, just if you recall, we've had used ECR as a service for about, for three years now. Uh, that first year was also coming out of COVID, so there, I don't know that that twenty-one, twenty-two data was really data that was reliable. So the last two years have really been what we've been looking at. Uh, so this is a, a really good opportunity to wait, take a look at the growth comparisons of our students uh, this past year, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, and, and previous years on, on the IAR assessment. What we typically see is that a green dot, if you recall, can re, represent, uh, typical growth. So expected growth, uh, which is, is not a bad thing. It's, it means that we're on track. Uh, or it can represent statistically insignificant growth, meaning that the growth was very minimal, it was some growth, it doesn't make much of a difference. Or that the group of students that it's measuring is so small that it's, it's statistically insignificant. Uh, what we saw in our growth data for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four in comparison to previous years on IAR is that can, pretty much consistently, our schools had blue growth, which is higher than expected growth, which is a great celebration. So as we constantly work towards achievement, and we talked previously about that grade level achievement for all students is what we're aiming for. The way to do that, knowing that most students need more than one year's worth of growth, is to consistently reach higher than expected growth. And so we're really pleased to see this level of growth, um, on last year's IAR, of course, understanding that we want to continue that uh, in order to continue to, to reach great level proficiency for all. Um, so if we look at each of the scores, this is our overall district's growth on IAR. Um, point, plus point five seven, uh, anything above point four oh is, is higher than expected growth. So this is all subjects overall, and that increase in twenty-twenty-two, twenty, that, that increase from the previous year to twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, previously it was plus point two six, and it rose to point five seven, plus five seven. Looking at ELA, uh, really great growth across the board. I'm gonna highlight one in, in just a moment. But overall, uh, we saw plus point seven six, uh, which in comparison to the previous year was at point three four. So, uh, previous years it was below that blue level growth that we want to see, so point four oh or higher. I'm gonna come back to math in just a second, but really want to highlight, uh, we talked a little bit about it at our last meeting, but having the ECR data sort of puts it into perspective. The growth in ELA at Parker Junior High School that we saw yes, last year on the IAR assessment was really outstanding. Uh, Parker students, uh, reached the highest level growth in the district at, uh, point seven six. And if you see sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, uh, sixth grade at one point oh three, which is really outstanding, as well as seventh grade at point eight three, and really tremendous growth in our eighth grade students at one point two three. So again, just seeing, wanting to see the consistency of that blue level growth, that means that our students are growing at a faster pace, which puts us in a much better position to accelerate achievement for all students and help close learning gaps. Going back to math by school, plus three seven across the board, uh, with our, uh, plus three three at Western Avenue. And you can see our other schools at Parker, plus point four nine on IAR. Again, these are all based on Illinois Assessment of Readiness scores, so this is not, uh, we'll come back with our fall MAP data and AmesWeb. That data's in a different report, which we're still assessing on those right now. And then just reflecting on, uh, what worked and what our celebrations are. The major difference last year, uh, was that we started our work with grade level proficiency scales. And the building blocks towards standards-based grading are really, is really standards-based instruction. Uh, so we're very hopeful that as we continue this journey, uh, we've tried to be very intentional that this journey is not just about grading and reporting, and we can change things in Skyward and call it something, a different code. But the change really comes with instruction changing and teachers and students both understanding what those learning targets are and working together towards them. I'm really pleased with, uh, the response from our teachers. This is really challenging work. Uh, it's work that, uh, provides some disequilibrium and we, brings lots of, every step brings more questions. Uh, and that's okay. That's what's, how we grow, and that's how our students and our teachers progress through the journey. Uh, we will continue that work. If you recall, last summer, or this summer, uh, we revised all of those proficiency scales. So now every standard that we've prioritized also has a proficiency scale that goes with it. And we're really relying on those two things to keep catapulting this work forward, uh, to continue to see blue level growth. As we move forward, uh, with our, uh, upcoming data presentations, we will bring our, uh, fall MAP data, which we're finishing up this week, as well as our AmesWeb data, as well as bringing more of our school improvement plans uh, to discussion, uh, in a more frequent basis. Any questions?
I'm hoping there are a ton.
I do. Yeah, I have.
I'm hoping there are a ton, because the last time we shared data.
I have questions.
Let me start with.
Really as great as this.
Let me, let me start with.
But, but just one piece of context, in all fairness, one, and just one more data point.
Yeah.
Right? That we look at in relation to all of the others. There are things on here that we're still not in love with.
Yeah.
Right? Particularly when, when we get to the actual achievement side, but truly from a growth perspective, kudos to our building principals. Kudos, kudos to our classroom teachers, uh, directors, because the work that they've done, the work that they've led us into this year. Hopefully, we can continue the accelerated growth, and the achievement numbers will follow. So, uh, kudos.
Thank you.
Yeah, so thank you for, for all of your hard work. This is really exciting, and it just feels good because you know how hard everyone's working, and to see this, it feels great. So one question I have is about the proficiency scales. I remember last year you saying that teachers are so excited to get their hands on them and, you know, really put them, um, into practice. Can you just tell us a little bit more about why that felt so right for teachers? And like, how, how did everyone get on board?
Yeah.
And, and, you know, embrace that in, in such a, like, across-the-board way? Because I remember you talking about it multiple times, and even hearing teachers talk about it too, and, and the principals.
Absolutely, yeah. So I will say, um, we've, we've partnered with, we're continuing to partner with, with Marzano Institute. Uh, we have some very excellent consultants who have become, they basically live here. They are here all the time, and I have gotten to know the fabric of our schools and gotten to know our teachers, our coaches, our administrators. So having tho, those partnerships, we've all grown and learned from working with them. Um, but the skills in particular, our, our mantra throughout all of this work with standards-based instruction and grading has been clarity, evidence, and feedback. Our teachers and students need clarity on what they are supposed to be learning and how. We have to collect the evidence, and teachers need to be able to show the evidence of student learning. And then we have to give the students the feedback to help them grow, and teachers need to receive the feedback to help them grow. So that's really been our focus, and the skills really provide that clarity. So what's behind a standard? What do students need to actually do to demonstrate these really complicated and jargony standards? Uh, and it really, I think that clarity helps light bulbs go off. It helps break things down for teachers and for students, so we're not making it up. Um, and I think that some of the challenges we faced with the skills last year, and we knew that going into them, is that, um, they need to, that nothing is perfect. Nothing is going to be catered to exactly what we're seeing for our students. Um, so we sort of jumped off the cliff last year with them and said, just trust it, just try it, give it a shot with the scales that we purchased from Marzano. And I think that was a good move, because this summer we were better equipped to revise and say, oh, you know, we tried that. We think that needs to be reworked, but we have better context with it. And so now those scales are much stronger this year. They're aligned exactly to the standards we're teaching. And more importantly, the teachers who are actually using them have put their eyes on them and their stamp of approval. So I'm, I'm really hoping to continue that process every year. We should be revising those scales every summer and collecting the feedback. But what we don't want to get bogged down on is, um, perfect being the reason we don't take a step, and we don't go forward. And so this, we're learning as we do this, and so those skills will just keep getting stronger and stronger as we use them.
Thank you.
I, I'll, uh, note that we, as a board, probably were less than, uh, in our last data discussion, didn't do a very good job of, of thanking or congratulating the district for what it's done, and, and the teachers and the buildings. And so, you know, that's, that's a little bit, um, I think all, I don't wanna speak from all the board members, but at least some of us get frustrated when we look at achievement scores, and we're just like, I want them to be higher. We appreciate, that's a board-level strategy issue and discussion, and to extent that bled over to, or was perceived as less than positive feedback for the, for the team here, um, you know, it shouldn't have been. So, you know, the growth here is great. The quality of reporting has improved every year I've been sitting on this board. You know, the, uh, common mission and everyone pointing in the, in the same direction has improved. And, um, you know, the growth looks great, and I hope we can keep delivering that growth. That big-picture question of, you know, how do we deliver massive amounts of growth, right, is something that, that we need to work on.
Absolutely, and I think just having this data has really bolstered morale with our teachers and seeing, finally seeing consistent blue level growth across our district. It is such a great moment for our teachers, um, especially in the midst of navigating a new initiative that can be cumbersome and is, uh, again, jumping off another cliff this year. Um, it just is a really good feeling, and I'm really proud of our teachers and our administrators and all of our staff and our students.
I, I would like to say so that it is clear to everyone, thank you to Amabel, thank you to the administration for having the courage to move forward with standards-based learning. It is a monumental task that has the potential to deliver results, not like this, not just one time, but consistently. As we become more and more ingrained in the application of standards-based learning, the potential to see blues start to stack will get us to the point where we're seeing the levels of achievement that we can celebrate big. that we can celebrate big, right? So the effort is monumental, the courage to move forward is huge. And to see it on the front end is very exciting as someone who's worked extensively with standards-based learning. When we start talking about building student agency, building student efficacy, building teacher efficacy, we are now putting ourselves in a position of driving instead of being dragged around. And that's really exciting as an educational institution. So thank you all for the tremendous work.
Amabel, is there anything that we need to do to make sure that parents understand or know? Or anything that they can be doing in partnership when it comes to proficiency scales that we're not doing already?
It's a great question. I was talking with a teacher and a coach about that today. Our, our big message with all of this is transparency and pushing that with, with parents. And so the days of sort of keeping the secrets of what's on the test or what are kids going to be assessed on, those are over. So for example, this week, we're putting all of our year-long plans for all of our grade levels with all the standards and descriptions and proficiency scales that students are going to be responsible for on our website. Because we want parents to know, we want them to look at them, we want them to say, oh, what are you working on this summer? You're going to work on these standards that you were not on, not at a three or a four on. So it, it might, we might have some kids who are disappointed by that transparency, but that's the right thing to do. So just continuing to push transparency and, and making sure that we're letting parents know exactly what those targets are because we don't want to keep any secrets in this process. We also know that we don't know what issues we're going to come across potentially with endeavoring in this. So we want to stay open and flexible to make adjustments on the reporting side or on the technical side of things, just to help make it flow for, for, for parents. And that's okay, and that's part of the discomfort that comes with a change like this.
Thank you.
Amabel's really leaned in to that transparency piece. And we talk about parents as partners, this is it. I mean, you know, in separate conversations, we may have both heard, but if, if we put all of it out there, they're going to go ahead, they're going to prepare in the first quarter for the second quarter. They're going to, I was like, stop, I hope they do.
Yeah.
Could you imagine, could you imagine a world where we're clear about what students should know and be able to do by the end of that grade level? And we have transparency and we can talk to parents about, okay, here's what we think the first quarter is going to look like. These are the activities, here's how students will be able to engage with the content. Here's, here is what it looks like at home. Here's two things that you can do at the grocery store that are tied directly to what your, your children are learning. And, you know, I think, we kind of started this, I would, I would say this started two or three years ago, putting up, Amabel pushed her department, I believe Carol Humm might have been the curriculum coordinator when we put up the summer learning plans.
Oh, yeah.
And we started pushing information about, no, 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 this is what we're doing. It's okay, everyone can know this. We aren't in the business of secrets, we aren't in the business of controlling that information. My goodness, what a world if everyone knows what a third grader is supposed to do. And from a school community, whether it's the different villages, the school district, the park district, all of the different, you know, groups within are pulling towards those same targets. So I think this is, this is one step. It makes me a little bit nervous because I know how much communication has to go on the backside of that to do it well. But my goodness, if we can make a huge step towards connecting our parents to the expectations that we have for their children in a concrete way, and then we have good conversations with those families about, okay, here's where your child is in relation to the standard and here's what that path looks like, the world is our oyster at that point. And I think we can set some really aggressive targets once we get to that level of implementation.
Who will monitor all of that information if parents have questions and concerns?
Yeah, absolutely. So a couple of avenues, the main one being we have a QR code that's on our website that goes directly to a Google form that comes directly to me and my department, where we can filter out any of the questions that, that parents may have. Also, on the school level, teachers, principals, instructional coaches are here to help and answer questions. I think just on the, the parent support side, just parents understanding that this is, this is new for our teachers also. And so it might feel a little bit walking through the mud a little bit and clunky at first and just that being okay. A lot of unlearning that has to happen for parents also. We're used to seeing every single assignment, no matter what it was aligned to, is counted for a grade, every worksheet, every, you name it, whatever was given in class counting as a grade. And those days are gone because what has to count as a grade is true assessment of the learning. So that's a shift for parents also.
And it makes me think about, I think it was Beth Serena that had the conferences where kids helped lead it. It just feels like this is such a natural space for kids to have so much more agency and voice around what they're doing. And, and that, that's another level of connection to the family too, because they, they will be able to speak to that, you know, in a meaningful way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda are the ECR comparison districts.
Absolutely. So this is more of a, just a first stab at following up on some of our previous discussions around identifying comparison districts that we want to have ECR explore. We talked previously, you know, districts thrown out like Winnetka or Parker. Evanston was brought up as well. We did a little bit of our own comparisons using the scatter plot that I think Cameron was mentioning at our previous board meeting. ISB does provide us with some comparisons, whether it's based on the EAV status or the low-income status or race ethnicity. We have some idea of districts who are, are, if you will, fair comparisons for our district. So this is really just an initial conversation to take a look at those districts and have some discussion about if we want ECR to move forward with giving us reporting information to see how we're doing in comparison with those districts. One thing that is really helpful if, if ECR does this, and we've, we've explored this in the past, is that it also serves as an opportunity for us to say, well, what's working in that district that has comparable low-income status or comparable population of students or whatever the criteria is and learn from them and vice versa. So these are the districts that we started to identify. Again, this is not an exhaustive list, but when we look at these different categories, the EAV or the equalized assessed valuation, as well as the low-income percentage of students or the race ethnicity, these are districts that popped up as being close to us in some way. So these would be potential districts to explore. We could also consider discussion for other districts to consider.
Unfortunately, you might get two out of the three in a particular district, but all three doesn't exist. Homewood really is probably, in the state of Illinois, I would say Homewood is our closest comparison district.
And I would add also, Homewood be, Homewood would be one of the districts.
Homewood's already in, so if they're not, they're not reflected in the list because we just assume that they're in?
So then, it's, it's odd to do this comparison because, so let's just say Morris, sure. It, it meets two, but not the third. So then it's not really a fair comparison, right? I mean, as a board, that, that word, that's a little worrisome. It's not a fair comparison, it's an odd comparison even.
Nothing's ever going to be a fair comparison. I guess I hoped that everyone can handicap their view of the data by going, by appreciating those differences, I guess. Right, so, you know.
Significant in some sense. I mean, if you take one of those off, it's just a different district with different needs and.
Well.
Different strengths. I don't know.
No, no, I agree with you too. I mean, when I look at the state data, my takeaway from it is, okay, there are school districts that are in the same income band as us and are substantially outperforming us. There are school districts that are, you know, in the same, but you know, whatever you want to use, free introduced lunch or, you know, racial breakdowns and whatnot, are outperforming us. And that's really all I can take away from it, right? Because we start getting to, well, what exactly is different about those districts?
Yeah.
And I'm just being outperforming on peer achievement. I don't mean, you know, they're beating us in daily operations, right? I generally think, and to be fair, I haven't really like dug deep in state data for years because there's only so much you can learn from it. I think it's helpful for new board members, for people who are not, but there is a degree of diminishing returns in looking at that data.
Sure.
Because the next question is, okay, how can we be more like these other districts?
Right.
And that said, we need to pick some for consistency. I mean, but, but I, you know, I don't give a huge amount of weight to, you know, I'll say Bloomingdale since I grew up there. Well, I grew up next door in the district next door, but I went to high school on Bloomingdale kids. I wouldn't, you know.
But, but if we're going to do this, then, then you can't do that.
I'm sure it's a very different town than when I was there. But, you know, the reality is to really compare it to those districts, we would need to know, what is their administrative structure like? Do they, do they, you know, and the other pressures that they're facing, not just from property taxes and cost, but, you know, do they have a significant special ed burden? It's not, you know, maybe, and any one of those things can move a district sideways, right? Well, let's just say they lost their special ed director two years ago and there's substantial burden and it's, you know, who knows? That level of detail, we're never going to get from these reports.
I mean, I'm happy to do it, but I think it's a little bit of a slippery slope. And I, and I guess there's, we should caution ourselves with how we're using this information.
Well, I see it as an investigation at this point. We might, we don't know what we're going to find, right? We might be outperforming all of them, you know, to whatever extent, whatever that even means. We don't know, right? Let's go see what's up. And I think most importantly, because we have a great team and we are smart enough together to ask the right questions on what can we get to make us better as a result of whatever this investigation? What are all the questions we should be considering? If we see something that we might want to mirror or mimic or just take away from another space, I don't think we should, I would not like us as a group to enter into it with trepidation. It's more, more so just curiosity and see what we can in fact learn as a result of this. We don't know until we go, you know, check it out. And I think, you know, kudos to you, your team, putting this together as a baseline to then go see what in fact we might go.
But you want us, but we have to pick three. You don't, you, we don't certainly expect that you're going to do this list.
We would need to pick five.
Yeah, they'll, they'll run the data, but I think too, part of the reason for actually narrowing it down is to show why a district like Winnetka doesn't belong here, right? As we talk about our finances, we're at seventy-eight percent financing.
That's helpful.
They're at two hundred and six percent above. And so as we try to make those comparisons, this just helps us narrow down more often than not, these are in our window. Arbor Park is one right in Oak Forest that, that we seem to use.
And assumptions are dangerous, right?
Oh, sure.
You know, I think it's, it's, it can be dangerous to make wise judgment judgments and assumptions without real practical information. And I think what this is an effort to do is to bring in focus what is in fact real and then do an investigation to then hopefully assist us in improving, which I think is, is worth it, worth a look.
I agree with that a hundred percent. I think this is a foundation for our conversations around goals and what we want to see from a board level. You know, having insight to other districts' data that have some similarities and using that to help us build our conversation. If we see that for some reason we're not performing as well, right? Then we can say, hey, look, we might want to make a phone call and ask them what's working for them.
Sure.
And, and come back and have that conversation and say, hey, here's what they found working for them. Here's something we need to have a conversation about. Is it something that we think we can use and help set goals based on that information? Or do we need to look at something different? So I think the information can be very powerful as long as we approach it with the right disposition.
Absolutely.
I think one way to approach this list, if we, if I could suggest, could we move forward with talking to ECR about the districts that are hitting on at least two of these points?
Yeah, I would say at least two.
That way, if there's not all three, we hit on at least two. I think I could, even if ECR says, well, give us an extra fifty bucks and we'll do a six schools and maybe we could figure that out, so.
At least two, I would say.
Sure, okay.
Awesome. Yeah, this is very helpful, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, e-learning plan renewal.
Yes, this is just an update. We have, are required to renew our e-learning plan. The last time we, was our first time we did, it was in 2020. It is due up this school year. We made very minor changes to it, mostly on just some wording, some references to Google Classroom and the previous plan that are no longer relevant or things like that. For the most part, it stays the same. These are our days that we would take if conditions were dangerous or unsafe or for whatever reason, we would need to be remote. The memo includes the schedules as well as the, the platforms and the formats that we would use for instruction. For the most part, except for our pre-K and kindergarten students, most of that day is live instruction with office hours in the afternoon. Our pre-K and kindergarten students, our teachers do like a thirty-minute to an hour Zoom and then they have paper packets. Other than that, the plan is, is very consistent with what we've done in the past. We would need to have this approved and submitted to our regional office of education to be posted on our website and in place for the next five years.
I just had a question, do our kindergarten students go home with Chromebooks?
No, not, not on these days.
I noticed they would be provided a Zoom link for that thirty minutes to an hour. How are we ensuring that the students at home do have access to something that they can get onto the internet?
Yeah, so if they, if they, we typically, if they have a device at home, then they join. For the most part, our families have a device that they can join. They're not expected to be on that device all day. They have received paper packets in advance and that's what they work there.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five outdoor education.
Every spring, our fifth grade goes to Iron Oaks to have an outdoor education experience. And their teachers go along with them and chaperones, chaperone from our staff attend and they participate in team-building activities, rock climbing. They'll do some moors and just different activities like the wolf pack run and hide and seek. And so if we would like to continue that, I brought the contract of what it would cost from the Flossom Park District would be fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars. That is what it was last year. We have been going to Iron Oaks since COVID.
So just kind of bringing everyone back in the Wayback Machine, just pre-COVID, which was a great time, except for the fact that the outdoor trips that, the year before COVID were cut short because of bedbugs.
That is true.
Moving in.
Overnight, yeah.
Right, moving into, wow, it was still pre-COVID as we were planning. We were moving away from the overnight activity because of supervision and safety and security issues as we're sending whole grade levels of students out and asking teachers to stay overnight and do those sorts of things. So that's how we've gotten to Irons Oaks, especially as we're looking at where this falls in our set of curriculum experiences for a camp-like structure.
And I was looking at cost of that too, as I was looking at this, I believe it cost the district around seventy thousand for the overnight comparatively, and that was still charging students a part of it unless they got a scholarship. So this is just information for you to know what it would be if we would like to do it again. If we want to hold it for this spring, they're, they're holding it right now until the board makes a decision, but then we would need to put a deposit down on it in a month or so, so that they hold those May dates for us.
So this will need to be voted on at the next meeting or next couple of meetings?
Yeah, we'll probably bring it back to.
Okay, yeah, ideally pretty soon, yeah, because otherwise she'll give those dates away to. away to another school that wants them. Any questions? I don't have any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And the final discussion item is Key to Ed Individualized Education Plan Meeting Facilitation Training Contract. Did I say it right? Key to Ed?
You did. You did.
So to just refresh the board's memory, in February, I believe, I had brought this contract to the team to have our teachers train this summer on the IEP Individual Education Plan Facilitation Training that Key to Ed provides. We did have the training. We had it in July. It was wonderful. We had about half of our staff attend. In going through that process and going through the training, it really is imperative for everybody to have gone through the training. So that's why I'm bringing it back to the board. It would be grant funded again, but I would like to hold the training again in October and targeting the staff members that were not able to attend over the summer. And then that would help just keep that consistency across the board with our IEP meetings and how we're facilitating them.
Grant funded. Good job. Yeah. Grant funded.
And it was last year's grant that paid for the last training, so we're all good.
Great.
Okay. Any questions? No, we're good. Okay.
Thank you. Can I go real quick back to the e-learning plan renewal? I think you said it's for five years that it lasts? Is that what you said? We submit it and we don't have to submit it again for five years? But in between, like if we want to tweak or change, oh, three, okay. If we want to make an adjustment, can we? Like if, if something isn't working?
Yeah, well, as long as it meets the minimum requirement.
Yeah.
And we can always add on.
Okay.
And go to talk to our, we about that, we may need to like resubmit the form and do the approval again, but I can talk about, I can talk to them about that. But as long as we meet the minimum requirements of the learning plan, we can always add on.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Thank you. I just, I can, I can't remember, but David brought something up that helped me rethink a little bit about e-learning. And, and I think it was part of the conversation that we had around like expectations of what happened during the day and how do we make sure in, in the event that it's like many days in a row. And so I just want to make sure that we have an opportunity to say, oh, gosh, this, we need to do.
We need to recruit.
Whatever, yeah, more time, less office hours or, you know, whatever. But it sounds like we can do that.
Well, it's a good point also because we, we also don't know what circumstances would require us to completely shift in a different way.
Right.
COVID or something else like that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. The next items on the agenda are the information items. Is there anything, any questions about the information items?
Don't everyone rush to ask Fran a question about the June financials, but before we get there, would you mind pulling up the September board topics? You can always certainly ask questions about the financials. Usually I don't have any, but I did want to pull this up just to not close a loop, but wrap around another loop. This is after our previous conversation about monitoring and how we want to kind of more methodically pull information during the year. That starts in September with school improvement plan updates and department updates, along with continued that fall data presentation as well. So if we have data by that second meeting in September, we'll bring it. If not, we'll certainly bring a school improvement plan update and at least one department update and we'll continue that process all the way through. But as you're looking, we won't do this for every, you know, board topic report that comes up, but that's what you can look for in the future ones, the specific school improvement plans and then the data updates as well. And if we want to get more specific moving forward, we can certainly make those changes.
And the IASB delegate assembly representative is just for the.
Everyone was in a good mood, so I didn't want to say anything, but it'll be time to pick another representative.
Okay.
Who will vote on the board's behalf. We will have the policy and position statements here probably usually in about a month or so. We'll share those with the board. We will try to figure out an easy way to approve those. And then once we does, once we get those approved, designate your representative will be set for the board conference in November.
Perfect.
Christine?
I'm ready for it.
Hey.
Everyone steps back at the same.
Do we have a date set for the next, our goal setting session yet?
We do that.
Okay.
I need to double check.
And do you need to know our availability? Or can we, we can do it at an executive session at our next meeting?
We can do that. Let me go back and check the minutes from Dr. Williams.
Okay.
Perfect. Find out if it's us or her.
Oh, okay.
I can't remember. It may be us.
Okay. Do we have anything for executive session?
I'll keep it very brief.
Okay. May I have a motion to go to executive session for matters relating to individual students? Five ILCS 120/2C10. Matters relating to student discipline, five ILCS 120/2C9. And matters relating to personnel, five ILCS 120/2C1.